Test. Test. One, two. One. The time is seven oh five.
Thank you. Like a roll call, please.
Director Danziger.
Here.
Director Hassler.
Here.
Director Jordan.
Here.
Director Romer.
Here.
Director Dan.
There's nothing to report from the closed session in terms of the public session and so we'll proceed to the items on the agenda. Invite any public comment for items that are not on the agenda.
We do have a request from Sandy Pearson. And Sandy has requested that I share some photos. I'll go ahead and hold over there.
Hi, I thought you might be curious on how I'm coming with my pre citation. So I brought some pictures because they're worth a thousand words. Here's my backyard. After I cut the grass off this slope behind my house, you could see the logs. And the inspector said, but you've got logs out there. And I found this a little confusing because I also have two by twelves out there. And to me, the difference between a two by twelve and a log in terms of flammability is not obvious. But in any case, the chief is letting my log stay, so I'm very pleased about that. Because now I can have some lizards or possibly salamanders. Since it's pretty much the only thing that would interest wildlife in that area. But here's the other part that puzzled me. Next slide, please. Now, that's not my house. So here's the front of my house. And the inspectors went right by this bunch of kindling shaped like fence, which is attached directly to the breezeway and the big bushes that are actually touching the roof. Next slide. Yeah, here it is from the other side. I mean, this is a mess. How come nobody said to me, Sandy, what are you thinking? How can you walk by this? Last slide, please. So you'll be glad to know that even though the fire district didn't require it, they're all gone now, and I feel much safer. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments.
We have one hand raised. James Duff, the D of Arinda.
Hi, um, this is more just a process. The folks who are tuning in virtually were not able to see the slide presentation. Just in case y'all didn't know that. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan Goodwin.
Good evening. On next door, there's been this little theme that pops up once in a while amongst people in Oakland. My homeowner's insurance was canceled, but that happened to anybody else? And people would say, yes, yes, last year, yes. I, you know, I'm in such and such a zip code, but I'm down near Lake Merritt. I'm up by the hills, but they canceled it because of fire. So it looks like the insurance company, judging from that one thing, it looks like the insurance companies are beginning to respond to their losses in California and rather shoot from the hip sort of way. And I would guess that it won't take them too long to realize there's a whole lot of PhD fire science consultants out there that would be glad to take their money and help them organize what they're doing. And I would imagine the PhDs will do what PhDs do, which is to do research. And one thing they will look at is your fire code, where you say that for the purposes of the fire code, the entire fire district is a very high fire severity zone, which I think for an insurance company is kind of neon letters for do not insure. And what it does is it says that the building you're in right now in downtown Arinda has the same hazards and the same risk as some, you know, little wood frame shake roof building tucked away, hypothetically tucked away in Volandry Canyon someplace. That's a completely false equivalency, but that's what you have made into the code. And then, you know, they might also look at your findings of facts that the fires on in Oakland and Berkeley, those are the same kinds of fires we have in Maraga and Arinda, which is also a false equivalence, you know, I mean, worst fire in Arinda involved eight houses, four of which were lost. In Berkeley, it was in the hundreds and in Berkeley and Oakland in nineteen ninety-one, it was in the thousands. Right? But you guys are saying that they're equivalent. So from an insurance company point of view, I mean, I think that's probably a good reason to not insure people in this fire district, and I hope that doesn't happen. By the way, I hope it doesn't happen to you guys or anybody else. But I think I just say this because I think there's a certain gravity that's really been missed in the discussions you guys have about what you do. And the how this stuff really plays with people's lives in a sense. You know, that there can be unintended consequences and you know, telling the truth, not making false equivalencies, you know, I there's something to be said for that. That's really the reason I'm digging in with this. There's this old slogan always.
That concludes our three minutes.
Not being faithful to the truth. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any others?
We do not have any more hands raised or received written public comments.
Okay. And we'll move on with the agenda to the seven point one.
Brief information only reports related to meetings attended by a director at district expense.
Are there any?
Well, I have one. On July the tenth, Director Hassler, myself attended a demo on the Rosenbauer electric fire engine. Found it exciting and I think it's a, it's a was a glimpse of the future. This is the first generation. I was not a firefighter, not an engineer, but I was pretty impressed by just looking at it. It does cost one point eight million dollars, which is about double what we just paid for for a fire engine last meeting. But I think it's, it's something you know, for the future and there's electric engines. You know, and Los Angeles has one and there's other places in the United States and there's many more in Europe, and I think it's, it's something that's going to come. And one more item as far as information is this is the twenty-sixth anniversary of MOFD. We celebrated last, all last year, the twenty-fifth. And this month is the twenty-sixth, so just acknowledge that.
Thanks. Okay, any others? Okay, then we'll move on to seven point two. Questions or information, comments from the board or staff? Nothing? Okay, then we'll move on to seven point three, communications received.
Sir, the items that were posted on the website as well as several items that were relevant to agenda items tonight have been included in the packet for the board and public review.
Right, thank you. Okay. Seven point four, chief's update.
Sir, we're going to begin this evening with Battalion Chief Lambert. He's going to introduce our new employee.
Hi, good evening, directors. Lucas Lambert, Battalion Chief with Maraga and Fire District. I am pleased to announce the new hire of our probationary firefighter paramedic, Mr. Rick Carter. Rick comes to us after a challenging twenty-two weeks with the Joint Academy with Livermore Pleasanton and MOFD hosted by the Livermore Pleasanton Fire District. Firefighter Carter comes to us with previous experience from the Rio Vista, City of Rio Vista Fire Department, where he volunteered his time previous to that or correction, after that, worked for the city of Colton in San Bernardino County. Firefighter Carter holds an associate's degree in fire science and a bachelor's degree in psychology where he achieved through San Francisco State. Also of importance and to note, Rick grew up next door to us in Lafayette and graduated from Akalani's High School. Is currently a resident of the city of Arinda. I'm pleased to introduce to you tonight our newest firefighter paramedic, Mr. Rick Carter. Just going to keep it short and sweet. I just want to say thank you for having me tonight, and I look forward to serving the communities of Maraga and Arinda. So, thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Great.
Next, we'll have the finance report, Marsha.
Good evening, directors. I have a brief finance report. And we will start with the strike team reimbursement update. There has been no change since our last meeting. There's still an outstanding receivable of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-eight dollars. And I have contacted OES and we are reconciling that those receivables and making sure that those invoices are processed. So I'm working with them on that. Next slide, please, Marsha. Our fiscal year twenty twenty-three accounting close is in process. The interim audit is in process and it's going on this week. It started July seventeenth. On June twenty-second, we had a three million dollar treasury bill mature. And at that time, the district purchased another three million dollar treasury bill with a ninety day maturity and an additional one million dollar treasury bill with a ninety day maturity. The district now has a total of nine million dollars invested in the ninety day T bills and five million of that will be maturing on July twenty-fifth. This is Sarah fiscal year twenty twenty-four prepayment of six point four million dollars is due on July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And that concludes my report unless there are any questions.
I thought in the, this is Director checks, I thought in the budget for next year, that payment is seven million.
Yes, it is. So it also takes into account other payments that we make to Cessara, which include there's certain pensions that we have to pre fund that we have to pay directly. So there's some adjustments that go into the estimate of six point four million dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Director Danziger here. Do the proceeds from the treasuries just go into general fund?
Yes.
Yes, sir. With all, with the exception of the OPEV and the Venture Stabilization Trust Fund, any excess revenue drops into the unrestricted reserve or the general. Next, we'll have Christine Russell will give the human resources report.
Good evening, director. So tonight I have a, I have a recruitment update and employment changes. So for the recruitments, first office firefighter, paramedic, trainee, we've had, we had eight candidates that passed the oral board interviews in May. And then those eight folks were invited to the EMS evaluation on June twenty-sixth. We had one withdraw. So we had, we evaluated seven candidates and we passed five. So those five candidates are currently going through the background process at this time.
Christine, how many vacancies right now?
We've got seven. And then for the office specialist, as you're aware, with the, with this, with the new fiscal year budget, this office specialist for office specialist for fire prevention is a newly created position. So it was, so I I posted the recruitment on July second and it closes past Monday on July seventeenth. We had forty-one applications, so it was a good turnout. And I'm currently working through those applications and projecting to start hosting it, to host the interviews in beginning of August. And then finally, the fuels mitigation specialist position. So, so I reposted it today because the posting had become, I guess, if you could say stale. So I reposted it, so it is refreshed. And now it's on the top of all of the online advertising platforms. So we can start receiving additional applications. So I have, I have the the first review of applications on August first and the final filing deadline on August sixteenth.
Is this a few litigation specialist from the grant funded or?
Yeah, so it's, so we've got, so we have three vacancies. So we've got two regular budgeted positions and then one through the grant funded position, limited term through six thirty twenty-four.
Is there a current list?
No, there's not. Yeah.
These are open till filled and we'd exhausted the previous applicants. Christine and the fire prevention team have also exploiting some opportunities to do advertising amongst, amongst the California Conservation Corps, where one of our current specialists came from, who expressed that some of his his old friends and pals on the CCC might be interested in doing this instead. So they're conducting some outreach through that route as well to encourage more applications.
Yeah, and I've actually been in touch with that person at the California Conservation Corps that does the outreach. And so I've provided that individual with our posting and he's going to put it out there to all, to all of the members there. So, so they'll have access to our application process. And then I guess finally, the employment changes. Well, Lucas Battalion Chief Lambert already, he's already introduced Rick Carter. And then, and then finally, unfortunately, our fuels mitigation specialist Nat McMillan, she is separating employment this Friday. She, she had an opportunity to, to enroll into a graduate program, so she's leaving for that, so.
So you have, is that the three vacancies or you have four?
No, it's three. That's the three with her. Yeah. Yeah, so. Yeah. And then unless there's any questions, this concludes my update.
Thank you.
I just so, thank you, Christine.
Thanks.
And then Toral on a nice departure. She's been great. She's talented. She's engaged. And she's appropriately moving on to the next stage of her career. And so there's a real balance here between the really sharp folks who want, that are able to engage our residents and deliver well thought out and well delivered advice and requirements. Those are also folks who are going to move on to other things, some sooner than others. And anytime we lose an entry level position to go to grad school, I think that speaks to the quality of the folks we're getting, but it also speaks to the problem of retaining them, which are, I think we're at about a little over twelve months for, for average time in the seat in these positions over the several years we've had them. Okay, next we'll have the, I'll be providing the fire marshal report. Here's the monthly numbers you'll note for property transfer inspections. So we continue to have a significant number of fails. This mostly has to do with landscapers who are used to working in multiple jurisdictions, just as a few muscle memories spreading mulch right up to the edge of the house in preparation for open houses and so forth. So we continue to inspect to educate and to site in that space. And we hope over time that that gets better, particularly with the mulch. On the left, you see the exterior hazard expectations year to date. Significant number of initial fails. And we have a lot of cases open, obviously, because it's been early in the year. We've been getting a lot of calls in the office based on those inspections on the right, particularly that this year, we're not just doing roadsides, they're, they involve all sides of the building. And we have, we're just reviewing these today in Maraga. Forty-nine cases of citations having been issued to Maraga residents or to property in Maraga, however, about a third of those were out of district addresses, usually associated with vacant lots where someone from as far away as Malibu, in case we're dealing with today, owns property that has largely been left in its natural state for quite some time. But we're working through those and we expect to see the number of open cases go down rapidly as folks move forward. We have very few cases where people have indicated they will not do it. Most of the questions have been around, what do I need to do? Why? What, what's the mechanism I can use to accomplish this and how do I submit a request for modification if required? So we're moving through these, but it's a, it's a very busy time in the office now.
Do you happen to have the map that we showed last time, the red, green, whatever map about?
I can send it to Marsha in a minute to pull up. Give a second. I'll come back to that and give her a chance. Can we go to the next slide, please? Here we see the chipping numbers are largely unmove. The Arinda Measure R chipper continues to work. We continue to loan our chipper to the city of Arinda when theirs is down mechanical or for repairs so that there's seamless activity there. And then the MOFD chipper, while not reflected on this slide, has been very active, augmenting the fuel break work. So the chipping is occurring and tons are being removed. It's just not associated with the residential chipping until we shift back to that in October. But as I mentioned, the Measure R continues to work. As mentioned, sir.
Who is manning the chipper when it's being used for the fuel break?
The, the contracted crews. The contracted chipper crews. Or sorry, I'm sorry. The contracted hand crews that are carrying out the work on the fuel break are also feeding the chipper while our folks are out conducting the inspections.
Because I don't know if it's the time to say it, but you know, there's a, when we do have the inspections in Arinda, I know the area I live in is in that north part and there's a lot of stuff out on the street right now because the good news is people are actually doing what they were told they needed to do and getting rid of a lot of stuff. But because we don't have a chipper in the summertime, I mean, it seems a little awkward to me. I know we have a crew that you know, that does both, you know, that does the chipping and then does the inspecting. But when they're doing the inspecting, the next logical thing is to have a chipper that can actually go chip the stuff that people are following the inspections to do. So maybe we need next year to hire an outside crew to do that. So we can actually provide a chipper to people to get rid of the stuff we told them they have to get rid of.
Yes, sir. And I'll follow up with Mickey and James from Arinda to figure out how backed up they are on Measure R requests. And then maybe some judicious augmentation we can do there to help clear out the backlog. Particularly if material is being piled, we want to get that off the street as quickly as possible.
I thought we ran the chipper, funded chipper was operated year round.
It is.
Yes.
Sir, I just, I think they have a, I think they have a bit of a backlog right now because of increased demand. So this is the challenge of the seasonality of it. January and February, when it was raining, no one was calling for chipping. June, July, August, it gets very, very busy.
So maybe we need to do more big time, you know, like brush and tree inspection, which you can do year round. And so we have those guys when they're not and they're not being called for chipping, do inspecting.
Yes, sir. And the team, that was in April this year, they were doing roadside getting ahead on those and then large parcels. The challenge obviously is being efficient with the time that we, we can't cite folks for grass until after June first. And there's, there's not a whole lot of parcels that are exclusively one fuel model. But on Gordon Graham's suggestion, the team was out doing the roadside stuff, which is primarily not grass earlier this year, just to free up the capacity to do the targeted parcel level inspections.
I've noticed that on Canyon Road, a lot of the stuff that was there this winter is gone.
Yes, sir. A lot of work's getting done. It's been, this has been a really good year as far as getting some big mint. So I think some of the measures from the prior years are settling in. And the insurance thing, I think, is focusing residents on the importance of doing this work. On the E occupancies, as previously mentioned, we haven't gotten to those yet because school's not back in session. Those will occur, they'll be scheduled in August, primarily will occur in September. The R twos, we have, that's St. Mary's dormitories. We've had a pair of failures out there. We're working with them.
I saw somebody wrote in a letter, whose name I've forgotten, about, you know, stuff that was, you know, dead branches and just bad looking stuff at some of the school sites. So that's not interior stuff, that's exterior stuff.
Oh, you said those are, that's not, so the E occupancy is specific to the structures governed by the Office of State Fire Marshal. The exterior hazard abatement, that was included in the correspondence from a neighbor next to OIS. And they were cited for numerous violations at the OIS site.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Next slide, please. That, that was yesterday, without a question. And next slide. And this is just a summary. We continue to see that the non combustible ground cover within two feet of the structure inside zone zero is the primary violation. This is worth pointing out because there were some over the last several days about that. Zone zero is defined as zero to five feet. Within zone zero, our local amendments to the fire code now to the ordinance stating back to twenty nineteen require two feet of clearance of combustible material within zone zero. So zone zero is five feet, not two feet. That was a topic of great deal discussion. The State Board of Forestry is finalizing the regulations for zone zero as a statewide regulation that would apply in all SRA hazard severity zones and very high fire hazard severity zones in LRA. And that will very likely ban the use of any combustible ground cover within five feet of a structure, which is, that, that's, the science says five feet, seven feet of course. So that may change based on state mandate and portions of the district within the next year. Depending on whether they move that regulation forward.
A huge portion of our district is one of those too, right?
Not huge. It's actually relatively small, but that map it will be updated next year. We may see increased amount of very high fire hazard severity zones. Generally speaking, El Toianal, south of the Ladder Wasser and a few other isolated pockets, but that is, there's, there's not that much LRA very high fire hazard severity zone in the district. Everything on the north, Arinda North Ladder Wasser is not primarily because the credit they're giving to the Brioni's reservoir with regard to ground component of fire spread. Or just reminder as well, that's a two thousand and seven map using what was cutting edge technology in two thousand and four and five when it was developed. A lot has changed since then to include our ability to model and our understanding of wildfire behavior. So I wouldn't put too much stock on that. And I, to Jonathan Goodwin's comment earlier, the insurance industry is not using those maps in any way, shape or form for rate setting. Go to the next slide, please. All right, and this is, as previously discussed, this is the publication of all parcels with open five hundred dollar citations. They have the, the date, the, and the location by street, not by address to protect privacy. Go back one place. And next, please. Two forward. Nope, the other way. One, one more. And one more. And next slide.
Chief, I have a couple of questions on that report.
Oh, sir, go back.
Thank you. So this is the first time we've got, we've had this report, so I'm just reading a couple of questions. I see, you know, on, on, on the first page of it. So previous page, yeah, right there. So we have the liquidity, delinquent notices, three. At what point do we actually do go further? What's the action after three?
So the, the way that the ordinance is written, sir, is that it's a, there's a pre citation, thirty days, there's a citation of fourteen days. And after that, then there is a one hundred dollar citation. So we're really getting about the two month mark. By the time we get to the first citation, fourteen days for the first citation, and that's a hundred dollar citation, then seven days for a two hundred dollar citation. And then technically, it can be a five hundred dollars per day per violation going forward. We don't do that as a general statement on the theory that these are folks that are, that either we're having a hard time getting in touch with or we just, my sense is we're not quite there yet as far as, and we want to be careful that this doesn't, we are regularly is regularly alleged that this is a profit center for us, which it is not, or the intent of the fines is to get people's attention and to engage in a conversation about what is going to be done and when. So we generally speaking, we hold here while we try to figure out who they are, where they are, what the issue is. When you look at the the trusts and so forth, not, not the TRE trust, but the company name trust. Some of these are hard to get a hold of. You may recall from several years ago by Delmar School or Delray School, the NLC in Hong Kong as an example, where we learned that what certified mail overseas looks like. So some of these take some real work to run them down. And many times you discover that the trust doesn't even know they own it anymore. It's been, it's investment property. They bought it a long time ago. It's been just set and forget. It cannot be built. So some of these have some complicated histories that take time to run down.
Because I see only two of them are paid.
Yes, sir. And it's just a matter of where we are in the process. Yes, sir. And it's just a matter of where we are in the process of getting a hold of them. These are also some of the things that we look forward to having the office specialists. We have a dedicated person who's got the time and the energy to run these down because there is a trade off here. Every, every minute that's spent sleuthing out the ownership structure and the addresses and getting a hold of them is is time that's not spent out doing outreach, education enforcement, clearing out open citations, answering the phones, all the other things. And as I said, this is a very busy time of year um for prevention. And the fact that we're short two, soon to be three folks, um I mean, there's, there is a a great deal of triaging uh where, as far as where we're spending our time.
Yeah. And and basically, we want, we want the property owners just to mitigate their property. We don't want to do this. So I mean, uh we're hoping that, I mean, the, I think the intent of the board in in having this type of report was to give these property owners some incentive maybe to to do the work. Is there um? I I would, I would make a suggestion perhaps that um that people who have actually paid the fine, because I see at least two on this this first page, that maybe we don't need to put them on there anymore. Because.
I I agree.
Yeah, they paid, so.
And if we, if if they have been hard to get a hold of, I mean, people on vacation for a month, I mean, all kinds of stuff can happen. That's, I'm not making excuses for them, but stuff does happen. If they actually do the work, do we also find them?
That's right, we.
In general, we can, obviously, but.
Uh yes, sir. I I wave these things like candy at Halloween. I mean, if if someone's willing to do the work, we'll do the work and we'll waive it. So we have a commitment that we'll waive it when you show you've done the work, we'll waive it. It's simply not worth our time to, that the, these are all lost leaders. If every one of these folks paid, we would be, we would be out significant amount of staff time equivalent. Um just to have gotten to this point. So no, if we can, if we can amicably resolve the case and the work has gotten done or is in the process of getting done, we waive the fine, no hard feelings. And but I just point out, if you look at the dates on some of these, sir, um yeah, these, this is more than out of town for a month.
No. Question on St. Mary's, what's the history there?
Um they haven't been paying their uh the fines for uh nuisance alarms, of which we have 10 to 30 a month. Is that the range?
For today.
For today, as an example. Correct, which involved, as I was coming down here, um Engine 42, Truck 44, Code 3 across town at rush hour, which is not, I mean, driving Code 3 is inherently unsafe. And that to a, to an alarm sounding in one of the residential occupancies at St. Mary's, uh they paid their last fine in October, I believe. So they're, they're now nine months past due, uh have not corrected the underlying issues and and are not paying the bills.
Are they equipment malfunctions or pranks involved?
Hmm, no, sir. Um the primary, so a a false alarm is malicious or someone has has activated it with intent when there was not. A nuisance alarm is associated with malfunctioning equipment. These are almost, there's the occasional um false alarm, but these are primarily nuisance alarms associated with aging equipment.
Like you burn the popcorn kind of thing and?
Well, i- it's slightly more complicated in that it's that a a dorm has been retrofitted, so there's a kitchen in which popcorn is regularly being burned instead of having rate of rise detectors or smoke detectors. So the equipment is not matching the use of the occupancy. And therefore, when you burn popcorn, you have a lot of alarms go off. Um or you have steam from showers, as an example, things where there's a specific detector that's designed to prevent that. In this case, a rate of rise detector that picks up not the presence of smoke particulate, but the temp, the change in the temperature gradient that this can be engineered around uh that it, based on the call volume, that has not occurred.
Wow. And are these things that are, I mean, you can sort of plug and play, take?
No.
Oh, so you have to change the whole system?
The challenge is that when you have an old system that is planned obsolescence, uh nothing to do with us, this is a manufacturer thing. But when you go to replace a part of the system, there becomes a point where the system is no longer compatible with the components that are available. And then system upgrades become, and I'm not an expert on the installation of alarm systems. But my understanding is you get to where you have to upgrade the entire system because that you can simply not find the the parts or that you can't plug in one component into an otherwise complete system. I I, yes, your answer to, I believe it's your point or your question. I don't want to minimize the size of the engineering challenge of correcting this, it's significant that so stipulated. Um but there's also a significant impact on both the fire district and our residents. When four times today, uh we sent rigs Code 3 across town for a nuisance alarm.
Well, that's a material percentage of our calls.
Yes, sir.
And every time that happens, we're spending huge amounts of gasoline. Gasoline was $69,000, $79,000.
Mostly diesel, yes.
Mostly diesel. And uh it's uh, we spent over $2 million to buy new fire trucks. And every time we grab a fire truck to a false alarm, it's closer to having major overhauls or being replaced. Maybe we need to think about doubling those fines.
Uh we already have, the that the board on this year's fee schedule or last year's fee schedule, we increased, we escalated the um the fine schedule beyond uh 10 calls in a month and a third a day.
So is the intent to pursue the pain, these are payments of fees?
Oh, yes, sir. This is, these are bills that are owed, that have not been paid. Our underlying intent was that would, we would much rather is that the equipment be corrected. So that the nuisance alarms, which are not only imposing a tax on the residence of through the the running of our rigs and the um wear and tear as Director Roma referenced, uh but also occupied residential dormitories with regularly malfunctioning alarms are less safe than dormitories with a properly functioning alarm system. Uh people become attuned to regularly uh alarm, regularly sounding alarms are less likely to respond appropriately, et cetera, et cetera. So there there are a number of reasons that it would be beneficial if we're all involved if this were corrected. Um however, that we have relatively limited tools at our disposal uh beyond what we're currently doing.
You can't consider the, I mean, it's sort of a nuclear option, the building is unsafe and unoccupied.
We could red tag it, yes, sir. So that uh that now we have a political decisions. We'd recommend I bring the board to the policy.
Like I said, nuclear.
Yes, sir. That that standard, though, I I would say, though, that we've engaged the State Fire Marshal, they've been unwilling to to help. Uh our two occupancies are regulated by the State Fire Marshal. So we asked the State Fire Marshal to come to an inspection and to provide expert advice about whether these were considered out of service. Um this is a very gray area about what constitutes um a single um nuisance alarm is not a malfunctioning system, unless it is, because it's intended to always be working. And so somewhere between a single and four days is probably some cutoff point, but that's exceptionally gray area. Uh and obviously, red tagging occupied dormitories would be a significant event.
Yeah. Would increase the attendance at the meeting. Uh yeah, it would increase the attendance at your meetings.
Uh uh, Chief, what is F T B?
Uh where are we looking?
The column F T V, question mark?
So, right, so when the, when the citation ordinance was set up, it was set up so when people don't pay after the third uh notice, then they're sent to the Franchise Tax Board intercept program. So any uh state income tax refund or lottery winnings, if once that's on file, then the district gets, gets paid, basically.
Okay.
And of note, this St. Mary's tax exempt, so there is no, as as our other government agencies, so there is no franchise tax.
Okay. They do invest.
Nonprofit. All right. And next we have, and no other questions of that, we'll move to an update on the tunnel East Bay Hills fuel break. Work is underway. Um we got our Cal VTP bat PSA back approved late last night. So we are uh 100% in the green uh or moving out of the green uh and decured. But we are, we are approved for work uh underneath um the vegetation treatment plan. So this is a N E I R alternative established by Cal Fire, not any significant event to go through. Many thanks to Jeff Isaacs and his team and the folks from Sequoia Environmental doing the consulting. We've gotten work underway now that we've gotten into conditions that are favorable for work, having things been cured out on East Bay Mudland, where we're working underneath their habitat conservation plant. So this project falls from environmental compliance standpoint falls into two very distinct regimes. One is on East Bay Mudland, under East Bay MUDS HCP, under the supervision of East Bay Mud biologists, where the, where the crews are working in accordance with their previously approved take permits for endangered species. So that project work is what we see here is underway. And with the um with the approval last night, which moved us into the ability to carry out work under the Cal VTP in areas that are not owned by East Bay Mud, so by other private and public landowners along the project footprint. We are now able to to carry out work in those areas. So here we see uh folks working away with before and after, and they are, sorry, working away, next slide. Here we see material, the next slide, please, Marsha. No, sorry. We see material cut tiles uh ready for either chipping or pile burning, depending on the location, the next slide. Uh folks out there chipping away using the MOFD chipper.
And it looks like they're just chipping it out under the woods.
Yes, sir. Broadcasting back uh with with the exception of sudden oak death as species which should not be chipped. And the the best practice on this is to chip it back as to retard future ground fuel growth and provide some ground cover. Uh very, very little opportunity in this setting away from structures for moles to significantly contribute to the spread of fire. Next slide, please. Uh just like that picture. Here we see a before and after. Uh left is uh before, after, you can see, having been thinned out, the intact uh tree canopy is left in place with the exception of some of that uh underlying bay that has been cleared out, leaving the mature oaks in their place, chips broadcast back and spread around so we don't exceed chip depth. Next slide, please. Here we see on the left, the before, on the right, after. Um this is Dennis Rain's line, but what we're striving for here is uh what you would think of as a park-like setting. Uh I would point out that the view on the left, um which is what a lot of places look like, is often confused for the natural state. And that is not the natural state in this environment. That's the result of 100 years of fire exclusion. On the right, mimics the natural state. It's also extraordinarily unlikely to support rapid fire spread. And you can see how the crew has done a very good job, in my opinion, of leaving the non combustible ground fuels, the ferns, et cetera, intact and minimizing soil disturbance. One of the elements of this project is a a a large number of measures to minimize soil disturbance and leave existing tree canopy intact in a mature oak savanna, such as we see there on the right, uh those oak, that oak canopy is not capable of carrying fire. And so the work cleared out underneath to prevent ground fuels from carrying the fire, typically very, very effective to slow the fire spread and reducing its intensity. I think there's one more, Marsha.
How wide is the fuel break?
Uh between 100 and 400 feet, depending on on where we are. Um there are areas where it's going to be significantly wider, where we get the grass, where we're going, which is not work we're doing yet. Where we'll be clearing out the encroaching brush and then utilizing a combination of prescribed fire and prescribed grazing to maintain it over time. Uh but in the these heavily wooded areas between 1 and 400 feet, typically building off the edge of a 16 foot fire trail, so we're getting the benefit of the road for you. Uh here's another example of uh where work has been done. We've cleared it out, uh opened up the space and and left the canopy intact. And you can see just on the right, they're poking in the vein of this project, which is the abundant poison oak crop from uh from this year's rain. Um I quote Jim Call on this from when we were doing work on Wildcat Canyon, where he said with admiration in his voice, they were fearless uh when the crews are getting in, uh working on some of that. And in some of these areas that you get the poison oak vines that are six inches D V H. And they're just, um there's an awful lot of poison oak oil out there in the woods, but the crews are doing great work and opening that space up.
Can they, can they kill it or anything once they get, I mean?
No, we're not using herb sites uh on this project. Uh we could, but we are not primarily because of the proximity to or presence on the watershed. And in the absence of herbicides, uh fire is the best tool, but burning it is problematic because of the, you know, once we start releasing those volatile organic compounds, uh that is not smoke you want to be near.
When we use our equipment on this, do we bill?
Right back, yes, sir.
Okay. Other question is, I saw there was in the expenditures, the major contractors bill had been paid. How, what's, what's the sequence and how rapid are we billing those?
So I want to clarify one thing, which is the bill you're seeing, that was the the Pinehurst, not this project, right? We have, so that that the project you saw the pay payment for, that was the Pinehurst fuel break, uh 250,000 by the time we're done? That we completed um out towards Canyon, that's separate from this project, which has just gotten underway.
Okay.
And we're billing um. Right. So the, but the billing cycle here is it's either monthly or?
Right, so, yeah, so it's supposed to be, so we haven't, we haven't paid any bills yet for this tunnel, for the Tunnel East Bay Fuel Break. Because this just started, right? We just started this. And so we haven't paid any bills yet. And then once we do, then it'll be once a month, we submit a invoice to the state and then we should get reimbursed on a monthly basis.
Okay, thank you.
But how long does the, you know, how big a gap is or between when you send it in and when you get it paid?
Well, so we we haven't done it yet, so we don't know. But the first, when we did it before, it was very quick. So as long as we submit what we're supposed to, which are the reports and the maps and whatever they require, then it's been, it's quick turnaround.
This is distinct from the OAS billing for firefighting resources and apparatus, which we're still waiting for reimbursement for the floods in January. This is a different program and it's generally that once, and there will be some, there'll be some growing pains early on. Uh the state regularly changes the requirements and what they're asking for. So it is very likely that the first bill or two will have some back and forth regarding map layers and certifications and so forth. But at, as with the tunnel fuel break, once or the North initiated fuel break, once it got underway, um the process became very seamless and they, Mary got used to calling the person on the other end of the line and and it it got, it was pretty quick reimbursement once we're underway. Have to answer any other questions about the fuel break?
How much are we planning? Uh you know, it's a multi-year project, roughly how much we're planning on spending this year?
Uh I don't have an answer for that yet, sir. Uh some of that has to do, so Mike Jarski, the coordinator, we fired, who's who's getting underway, the the guidance I gave him was roll on the gas slowly and let's get a feel for this. Let's figure out and between the crews and him doing the coordination and the landowners. Let's ease into this and we we will accelerate the work at the rate our infrastructure can support it. Uh that being really the landowners in our comfort level of what we're doing, the contractors and their ability to provide crews and the supervision they require, the um the biological monitoring and his ability to to coordinate that symphony. So I don't know yet what um what full speed is going to look like on this. And as a result of that, I I'm not confident making uh an estimate of of how fast we're going to be able to move because some of this is event based.
In the budget for next year, I think there was an estimate or it must have been estimates then in terms.
Yes, sir. They're all estimates because we, there were things such as the the VTP PSA that we didn't know that that was going to come in until it came in last night. So until last night, we weren't approved to work in other areas. So there, there are some external factors that we're accounting for, um but we we have plenty of time. Um $6 million sounds like a lot of money until you start doing work with scale uh with this. We, I think we have the capacity for as many three crews working simultaneously. Uh our burn rate will go up dramatically uh once we hit full strength.
How big's the crew?
Uh they're between 10 and 18 per crew.
Thank you.
And we were extraordinarily limited on our ability to use um machinery because of the soil disturbance and because of the presence of all limited wood snake habitat that most of the places, open brushfields that would lend themselves to mastication, uh simply off limits within the confines of the take permit and Department of Fish and Wildlife as simply has no sense of humor about masticating and wood snake habitat. Especially with, if it's public land, it's essentially off limits. And if it's private land with public money, it's it's not quite off limits, but it's close. Okay. All right. And Lucas will provide the operations update. Next, please.
Hi, good evening, directors and members of the public. My name is Lucas Lambert. I'll be giving tonight's uh operational update. And before we begin, uh I'd like to mention that our monthly operations update is an overview of uh just some of the work um that is completed by our staff. And at times, um I'll take a snapshot, snapshot of some of the work that uh has been completed over the previous month um or focus on significant events or incidents um that has occurred. Uh alternatively, some information uh is purposely withheld uh in an effort to protect and maintain privacy and not to interfere with ongoing investigations. Also want to thank our staff for providing um for writing the pictures that we can use during these updates. I think it's important that uh we share um at least some of what we do on a monthly basis um to our directors and to the public, uh even if it is just a brief summary. Next slide. Uh beginning, um MOFD enjoyed another successful Fourth of July um celebration this year. Throughout the communities, uh families were out and about, um enjoying many of the events that took place between Moraga and Arinda. Um uh cooler temperatures assisted in the decrease uh fire danger threats uh throughout our county. Um so that that certainly uh helped us with our events as well. Next slide. Uh just a glimpse behind the scenes that many people may not understand uh is the preparation that goes into the event plans. Uh in preparation for the busy holiday, uh staff work collectively to build out a plan for the day's activities. Uh the event action plan, as you see. The event action plan, as you see. As you saw earlier. Perfect, right on track. The event action plan, as you see before you. Is a is is an outline of the events that that they go through our day. And it's a pre-incident or pre-action of. Everybody that is assigned throughout the day. It also includes, as you see here to the right, a spot weather forecast. That outlines the day's expected or anticipated weathers. This forecast is. As you can see, barely at the top there, is provided by the National Weather Service specifically for. Whatever area that we that is requested. Acting Battalion Chief John Bensley put this together this year, assisted with collecting all the information. And and everything that we do for the day's events are are held within these documents. Next slide. As in years past, M O F D was proud to participate in the parade that took place in downtown Arinda. And we were joined by representatives from Assembly Member Rebecca Bear Khan Office. Anytime that we catch chief behind the wheel of a fire engine, we want to make sure that we take a lot of pictures. I I know that he takes every moment to enjoy being a firefighter again. We had to remind him how to start the engine there, but. We're very, very pleased to to be, to take part in the in the day's events. Next slide. Here's a slide of a remote automated weather station. You may have saw it if you saw the parade or in previous events. That was placed on the bed of one of our stake side trucks. It provide, provided a demonstration of some of the equipment that our district has provided. By Rescue One to provide accurate, real-time weather data. This this display generated a lot of questions and comments from the public, and it was a great opportunity. For us to educate our our citizens of just some of the tools that we have. And also, you'll see in front of that is a side-by-side that was also provided to us by Rescue One Foundation. Next slide. The the recipients of the Golden Ticket Award are F A K members, Tom and C Z Turner. From previous years were able to join us for a ride on Truck Forty Four during the downtown Arinda Parade. As well as our our own staff member Valerie Walston and her grandson that we've. We've promised that she started working here. So we were excited to have them along for a ride in in Truck Forty Four. And then also Rescue One Foundation was represented by Perrin Kill, a former M O F D. Board of Director Gene Godfrey as well. Next slide. This this picture here is a picture of Truck Forty Four in front of one of our engines. As you can see, articulating down the parade route. It's, again, this is one of the funnest events that we have. Certainly one that I that I enjoy interacting with our communities and families through the day's events. This is just one of them. Here in Arinda. Next slide. And finally, referring back to the E A P or the Event Action Plan, as I mentioned. At the beginning of the presentation, staff reviews all of the safety considerations. To confirm that coordinate, the conditions can support a safe firework event. The spot weather forecast is coordinated with current weather conditions at the fireworks site in the Maraga Country Club. And then the document on the right is a is another reference that we use as a Fourth of July go-no-go checklist. So collectively, we we compile all the information together to make sure that we can provide for a safe. Fireworks display to our communities, and this one is in Maraga. Fortunately, we were, and it was enjoyed by all. Next slide. Switching gears just a bit, with with changes in weather conditions. Throughout our district and holiday events, our crews have experienced an increase of emergencies that occur in the open spaces throughout our district. Or in other words, as it's termed by our dispatch, they're called limited access rescues. In preparation to this, to facilitate these rescues that occur in remote locations. Our crews engaged with regional aerial resources. This one here is a training with the with our M O F D members. That participated with Reach Helicopter or Con Air One. Their identifier is Con Air One, it's have a contract with Contra Costa County Fire. And Reach to provide this helicopter as a county and regional asset. The helicopter is available as a primary air ambulance transportation throughout our county and can aid in as a as an eye in the sky. To assist our ground resources and and directing them in. And like I mentioned, their primary mission is to to transport. Patients or injured individuals from the incident to obviously definitive care at a hospital. Next slide. And here's another another picture of our cruise training with the Con Air Crew. In this training, we're able to provide some ground communications, patient loading, equipment location and resource capabilities. We enjoyed having them out. Next slide. Coincidentally, just as we were wrapping up the training that you just saw in the previous slides. We received a call for an emergency in the Tilden Regional Park for a limited access rescue. In a remote area within the park, we use the helicopter and other inter-agency resources to facilitate the rescue. Unfortunately, the the training that I just showed you the the picture of previously was in Arinda. So just on the other side of the ridge. They were able to get into the into the sky and provide us, we were able to facilitate the rescue. This this side-by-side here is provided with by East Bay Regional Park District, assistance with Berkeley Fire. El Cerrito Fire and us, of course, as well. And 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 Concha Costa County Fire with the helicopter. Next slide. Just the following day after that, M O F D crews worked with another regional helicopter that is available. This one is C H P H thirty. This helicopter is available out of Napa. They. Even though by by ground, Napa takes quite a while to get there. These folks can lift and be in, be over. Over us very quickly. This helicopter is a, has the capability of long lining. Or in other words, an injured patient from the incident location, they can lift that patient. And and place them in a safe location, such as an open field that you see there before you. This picture was taken from a a different limited access rescue the following day from the previous. That occurred when a a hiker became dehydrated and disoriented while on the remote trailhead in Tilden. Again, as as we've all experienced over the last couple of weeks, we've had some increase in weather and heat. Through the weather conditions and certainly increased our calls for service. Next slide. And last, crews have been out driving the network of fire trails throughout our district. We use this opportunity to survey the conditions of the trails after the rains, they they. Can cause landslides or washouts and refresh our drivers with four-wheel-drive training. This, as you see here, this is a type-three engine, which is different than what you would see as our traditional type-one engine. This engine is one of our primary wildland engines. As you can see, it has a, it it has. A greater ground clearance to allow us off-road capabilities and and drives with four-wheel-drive assistance. So that we can reach these remote access for whatever the emergency is, via fire or limited access like spoke about previously. But this is certainly one of the the. Trainings and topics that we've been completing over the last month. Next slide. And in closing, as I introduce probationary firefighter Rick Carter, Rick Cotter, once again. He was joined by us and are in support of all of his hard work over the twenty-two-week academy. Want to welcome him again to the next phase of his probationary process. We certainly enjoyed attending his academy. That is all I have. Any any questions? This concludes my monthly operations report.
Thank you, thank you.
Public comment is available now for. Announcements, audience.
Jonathan Goodwin.
Hey there, I was just wondering about the report on the fire trails or how many are. Will not be available this fire season. In other words, how many are, if you will, disabled?
Yes, Jonathan, that's a good question. And that's a part of the reason that we're out and about driving the trails. Normally, this would take place in the months of May and and June, but with the late seasonal rain that we've had. It's led us into this time of year. So to answer your question, we're not sure. That's why we're trying to do our best to be out and about. When we do come across a trail that is, that we cannot pass, we take a GPS location. Pictures, other documentation so that we can either, that we can contact the landowner to to provide the. The service needed to get that trail back in service.
Just one related question. Did you have problems be because it's been such a wet year, there's still. Creeks flowing that normally would be dry a long time ago. Has has that also been a problem? Or that's still in in progress, you're still assessing them?
And so less so the creeks, because we have very few places with Ford sites, more so with weeps, where there's. Long dormant original springs are coming back to life and you get wet spots. We had a. Couple early season attempts to get out and do some scouting in the side-by-side cubata where it got stuck because things were so wet, but those have largely dried up now. And I'm not aware of anywhere that was impassable due to the moisture in the roadway.
All right, thank you.
And that concludes our public comment.
Go on to the consent agenda. Any? Any questions or want items that any of the directors would like to have? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move reapprove the consent agenda.
Second.
Open for public comment.
So we've opened public comment on the motion. We do not have any hands raised. We've not received written public comments. Director Danziger.
Hi.
Director Hessler.
Hi.
Director Dorgan.
Hi.
Director Romer.
Hi.
President Jeff.
Hi.
Item nine point one.
One. This is the consideration for the Coordination of Wildfire Prevention Act, using it around East Bay Hills.
Evening, directors. At the December twenty twenty-two board meeting, a director reported receiving an email from the Oakland Fire Safe Council requesting thirty-five hundred dollars. Continue their efforts to form an East Bay Hills wildfire prevention and vegetation management group. Director asked that an agenda item be brought forward, and this item was included as item twelve point four on the January twenty twenty-three regular agenda, which is linked in the staff report. The original request is also included in Attachment A. More information regarding the efforts to form an East Bay Hills wildfire prevention and vegetation management group is available at the link provided in the staff report. On March twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three, correspondence was received from Lisa Jacobs and John Coffin, including attachment B submitting a letter of request. From the Oakland Fire Safe Council for M O F D contribution to legal facilitation costs to establish an East Bay Hills wildfire prevention M O U, which is included as an attachment. The correspondence included a list of jurisdictions and the amounts of their contributions. The jurisdictions from Alameda and Contra Costa County that were either requested or made those contributions are listed below. At the April twenty twenty-three board meeting, a director requested an agenda item be brought forward for the board's consideration of the request for funding and the amount of thirty-five hundred. From the Oakland Fire Safe Council for an M O F D contribution. This was approved and M O F D transmitted thirty-five hundred dollars to the Oakland Fire Safe Council last month. In June twenty twenty-three, the Oakland Fire Safe Council, through their consultant placeworks, provided a presentation to review the proposed M O U, which staff attended. Staff and representatives from several agencies posed questions at this meeting, which are represented from the Oakland Fire Safe Council, will be able to answer during a presentation to the M O F D board this evening. The draft M O U and draft resolution lists potential participants are included in attachments D, E, and F. With that, I would recognize John Coffin, who is representing, a representative of the Oakland Fire Safe Council to provide more information about the proposed M O U.
Thank you. Thank you very much for inviting me to participate this evening. And I just want to say at the outset, I was very impressed with watching the fire prevention work summary that was presented to you this evening. You guys are are right out there doing a terrific job. So I I commend you for that. And I wish that all the other jurisdictions in the East Bay Hills would do as well. As you know, fire doesn't stop at city or county lines, and that's why we have proposed the M O U. And that's why it's now being considered not only by your agency, but by virtually every other agency that gets involved in fire. Prevention or firefighting in the East Bay Hills, simply because we all need to work together on. Fire prevention as well as putting out fires, which you guys have been doing so well for a long time. I don't have a a a real presentation to make to you, except to say that the. Work on the M O U has been going on for some time. It's been reviewed by attorneys for all the various agencies. That are interested in joining the M O U, including yours. And there's been lengthy discussion. And so you see a draft of the M O U that was approved by some. Twenty different jurisdictions. As as something to submit for review or consideration by the various boards of directors, city councils, and boards of supervisors. So it's been a long process and I'm happy to answer questions if I can.
A question of. By the board?
Yes, hi, this is Director Danziger. My first question would be. You know, we were one of the original group of of seven agencies that contributed some funds to. At the beginning of of this process, to get it going, at least through the fall. And then in in one of the attachments, there's a list of, you know, dozens of of jurisdictions. So is is the intent to expand this to include all these other agencies?
Well, the, I think the intent is to invite the other agencies to participate. Yes, there were seven jurisdictions that were on what we called our working group, which is the group that developed the M O U. And your contribution paid for our consultant placeworks and for the attorney to draft the M O U. So we are now proceeding to invite. Not only the seven agencies, including yours, but all the other agencies in the East Bay Hills that are interested in joining and participating. To consider it and approve it, so that by this fall, we'll have an M O U in place. So, yes, we were. We're going to ask all those different jurisdictions to participate. And whatever payments need to be made will be decided by the M O U at one of their first meetings.
So are all these other agencies, like basically Richmond down to to San Leandro? And and, you know, we have Livermore Pleasanton. Are they all going to be asked to to consider the M O U and to join?
They they've all been asked in the sense that they've all received the the invitation. And now it's up to them to decide if they want to participate.
So a- as of right now, what other agencies have have joined, have approved this?
No one has yet approved it. The invitation just went out a couple of weeks ago and. The considerations are beginning. Some agencies are on summer break, so they won't consider it until the fall.
And and what we see here is just a draft, right, M O U?
No, well, it's a draft in the sense that no one has signed off on it yet. But the the M O U was considered to be final by the various agencies that met. So that's why it's now being circulated for approval by by everyone.
I I should note, though, that at the presentation that occurred last month or earlier this month, I guess. The M O U may be final, but there are the tremendous number of unanswered questions that that the the drafters and the consultants. Proposed being worked out by the signatories once they gather in a brown act.
Correct.
In the absence of dedicated staff.
Yeah, that that's correct.
So. So so chief, do we have? I assume we have agreements with the various buyer agencies, and we coordinate with them not only on responses, but actually planning how we would respond, and, you know, so from a putting the fires out standpoint, I assume we're reasonably up to speed on this because of.
Yes, sir, and that's far outside the scope of of this MOU. Our auto aid, our well, from in the hierarchy, our boundary drop, our auto aid with agreements, our mutual aid with agreements, and our state master mutual aid agreements are in place sophisticated, well established, and far outside the scope of of anything this MOU group would do.
So, Mr. Kaufman, I guess I'm you know, the version of the MOU that I got had a lot of, I don't know, somehow maybe it didn't get transmitted well, but it wasn't in English anyway. So can you just give me a two minute summary of what this group is supposed to do?
Uh, yeah, the there is actually no specific scope of work because, as the chief just mentioned, that will be determined by the group when it initially forms with the participants who've agreed to sign the MOU, they'll work out the the scope of work, but the the idea is to get together to work on fire prevention and coordinate efforts on a regional basis, simply because it's recognized that wildfire prevention is a regional problem.
Well. You know, I'm I'm concerned about that we're already members of the Diablo Fire Safe Council. It to me, this looks, you know, larger, but it could duplicate what we're already doing, and and I'm trying to grasp why why we need this, you know, why it's different.
Well, it's a- a- as you mentioned, it covers a a broader geographic area. It's the entire East Bay Hills, recognizing that the entire hill area is a severe high severity zone, a high risk zone, so that's the purpose of the of this agency. What this agency does could range anywhere from just coordination and getting together and sharing ideas to an organization that submits grants to raise funds to do the kind of work on a regional level that you guys are doing in the way of removing vegetation and making the areas that are not now fire safe more fire safe.
If I could just clarify several points that were, I think, misstated. One, we are a member of the Diablo Fire Safe Council, we're also a member of the Hills Emergency Forum. Diablo Fire Safe Council is the Fire Safe Council for Alameda and Contra Costa County, so it's significantly larger scope than the proposed MOU because it's all of both counties than the two million or so people who live there. The Hills Emergency Forum has a more narrow scope, came out of the nineteen ninety one wildfires, and and as John stated, this proposed MOU group would have a larger scope than the Hills Emergency Forum, but a smaller scope than the Diablo Fire Safe Council, and then just because these things matter. Portions of the Oakland or the East Bay Hills are in very high fire hazard severity zones. Some are in high fire hazard severity zones, but they're not all in high fire hazard severity zones, and none of them are in a high risk zone because that's not a designation that exists.
So it seems to me that this kind, I mean, it's for resources at least, it can it it can coordinate with, but also compete with the thing that is on our later agenda. And so in in that respect, if the idea of staffing something that's that's that big to me seems it sounds like we're already from a fire suppression standpoint, already coordinating. I assume you don't only talk about fire suppression, you talk about, you know, how to prepare for fires and things, you know, so.
Well, we're not, we're not talking about fire suppression at all. That's, you know, as the chief just said, that's a whole separate and and very well thought out and planned effort that you guys are currently involved in. What what we're talking about is wildfire prevention. And just to give you a little history, the Hills Emergency Forum was something that we've considered originally before we came up with the idea of a JPA or now an MOU. We approached the Hills Emergency Forum because we thought that might be a good vehicle and to to take that vehicle and expand it and focus on wildfire prevention as well as and and make it an open public body. That was turned down by the Hills Emergency Forum, so that's why we're moving ahead as we are now.
But, John, to clarify, the contact with the Hills Emergency Forum occurred over a year after the JPA MOU project began. The JPA project didn't come out of the Hills Emergency Forum rejection of expansion of participation.
No, no, that's actually, we talked about approaching the Hills Emergency Forum, and they turned us down, and that's why we actually began working in earnest on the JPA and now the MOU.
That that's incorrect, the the timeline.
We we clearly. I was involved in, I was involved in that effort, so.
Okay, well, I I presented this idea to the Hills Emergency Forum at behest of the JPA group, so the the timeline is simply incompatible that I could have known about the work of a group that had not yet been formed.
Let me just say, this is my, whoops. This is Director Mike Romer talking. I'd like to, first of all, really commend John Kaufman and Lisa Jacobs and their entire organizations for their great motivation and for all the efforts that they've put forth. I'm not sure exactly what's on the agenda today, but maybe it was a mistake, but in reference to Director Dorgan's earlier comment about the memorandum of understanding, the copy I got appears to have numerous typographical errors. It it appears to be in need at least, a minimum of further revision before we can consider it, so I'm not prepared to to move forward to vote, to adopt the memorandum of understanding today. And in due and complete consideration to the to Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Jacobs, and all of the folks working hard for them. I do want to give further, I I think we need to have more information before we're going to commit more money and resource on this. We did send a thirty five hundred dollar check. I voted for that the last but since then, we now have the Moraga Rinda Fire Safe Council. I think we have a certain obligation to prioritize our time, our resources, and maybe even our money toward an organization that's basically working in the heart of our community rather than along the periphery. So, again, I and you know, I I I think Mr. Kaufman's great, the efforts are great, but I don't think we're positioned where I'm prepared to resources to sign the MOU or commit all the time and money until we kind of have to wait and see, let's see what what some of the other agencies do. And maybe maybe a further meeting, we can reconsider that position, but for this meeting. Any other thoughts?
So, well, I would agree, and and not to speak for Director Danziger, but he and I were both involved early on, you know, a year ago or something, some of the, you know, meetings, and it was definitely herding cats at that point. You know, this list of, I don't know, fifty or sixty agencies that are there. Many of them didn't participate, they had different agendas, I mean, it was there is not unanimity in what the mission of this thing is. So I I think if they get their act together, you know, some some subset of that gets their act together, and we decide later if we want to participate, that's one thing, but I'm not sure. I think I would personally rather focus on an opportunity that is within our district now at least and consider, you know, and thank you again for, I mean, I'm a big fan of fire prevention, so I I commend your efforts. Thank you for doing all this work. I know it's a lot of thankless work that people do, so thank you for doing all that, Mr. Kaufman, but for right now, I think for my vote, at least from this organization, I would say, let's think about it later.
Yeah, well, I can I can understand your hesitancy, and I don't know what draft of the MOU you have before you, but if you go to our website, East Bay wildfire prevention, right at the top of it, you'll see a link to the the final draft, which hopefully does not have any typos in it.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, this draft, all the Ts and Is are a question.
Yeah, the draft that I have, for example, on page seventy three says, whereas in a P A R question mark sipatens have discussed several, it appears that instead of a T, there's a question mark every time there's a T. You know, that's a it's a best confusing to read.
Yeah.
Figure that out.
I.
It's a draft.
No, no, PDF conversion issue that.
That's a PDF conversion.
Yes, sir, that.
So all we need to do is.
I'd be happy to provide a a copy from the website, but that that simply has to do with the conversion to PDF when the web, when the the packet was built.
Okay, all right, well, then, my my mistake.
But for me, regardless of that, I I would rather readdress this when they have other, you know, when it when it's a little further baked than it is right now.
And and understand what the ask is. I don't know what the ask is.
I agree, I agree. I I I think right now there, I mean, even I I'm not prepared to devote on this right now, or I don't think that's.
It's not, it's not on for vote.
But, I mean, in the in the future even, if we agree on this MOU, I think that's all we're doing. We're not committing money at that point or funds because there's no fund structure right now, and I I'm concerned about that, the whole process for reimbursing a fiscal agent and how their oversight and
Right.
and we don't have a lot of discretionary money in our district when we do have a a low, you know, local organization perhaps, and and we're looking at other expenditures here, so I I think we need further discussion of this is what what we need.
Any further comments or questions of? John? Okay, we'll move in on to the public comment. We'll entertain any public comment with a three minute minimum.
Jonathan Goodwin.
Good evening again, and I'm happy to represent the entirety of Moraga resident, Moraga Rinda district, fire district residents who aren't on the board here with a little public comment. Can I say that lightheartedly? I I also want to thank the gentleman for all the work he and his fellows have been doing. It's quite obvious to a whole lot of people that more needs to be done that the agencies basically do what agencies do, and as he noted, this agency here, its work is pretty much nonconforming with history with your basic fire agency in a in a big way, in a good way. But agencies still will only go after what they feel comfortable doing, you know, what's within their mandate, but they feel they can get in and get out of there. There, I don't want to say cagey, but they're 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 very deliberate in their commitment of resources. There's a lot needs to be done. Nobody can agree on much of anything, really. You look at the in terms of what what the priorities are, what the problem actually is. There's not general, you know, there there's agreement on the headlines. There's no agreement in the detail, there's no real deep understanding because it's not a one size fits all situation. You have, you know, you take Oakland, you know, there's lots of different areas of Oakland all have different configurations and different sort of pluses and minuses, if you will. It's just, it it's 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 a huge problem, it's very difficult to approach, and what ends up happening with the Fire Safe Council with the Oakland Wildfire Prevention Assessment District, with other groups that have come and gone, is they end up focusing on the the kind of the narrowest of low hanging fruit, to mix meta combined metaphors and settle for that. I mean, that's what H E F does, that's that's what Fire Safe Council does. It it comes down to it's like institutionalized food or institutional food, I mean. You know, it's just bland, but it's for a reason. It's because that's what, you know, can be done. My suggestion is that somebody, this group or another, actually figure out what's going on and what really needs to be done, because that's never where the discussion goes. The discussion goes to what little stuff can we do? We can knock a little off here and knock a little off there, but there's no real overall understanding of the very complicated list of elements. You know, you've got the public, which is, you know, a wild card, you've got the weather, you've got the fuel, you've got the agencies, you know, it's 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 extremely complex, and this should be studied, in my view, before people just go out and start shooting from the hip. So that's what I, you know, were I on the board.
That concludes our three minutes.
Okay, I'd like to finish this sentence.
We let him finish? Yeah, is that okay? Yeah.
Were I on the board, what I would stand up and applaud is one group or another actually really taking the, you know, grabbing the the initiative to deeply study what is going on and understand what interventions are useful in what context, to what extent, so that people in the position of board members can then wisely in, you know, direct resources and expect that might lead to to such and such. Absent that, it's a it's a melee, not in a bad sense, but it's just it's just highly disorganized at best. And again, look at the Fire Safe Council, look at H E F, they've they've taken it down to something extremely simple because of the complexity of the problem. Thank you.
I guess my comment to that would be things, things can be really complex, but the eighty twenty rule applies to almost everything in life, in my experience. And if, you know, you can get eighty percent of the of the result with twenty percent of the effort. And so my thought for that is we have a we've done a lot of work as a fire district to understand what the issue is. It might not be perfect, sure, it's not perfect, but I think we know quite a bit about what the general product, you know, problem is, and for example, enforcing the fire code or doing the equivalent of that on open spaces and things and getting rid of a lot of the fuel is the number one thing that's going to make the fires less of a problem. So I don't think it's rocket science.
Any other comments?
We do not have any.
Okay, then. I don't, I sense that there is no action going to be taken.
I just want, is is Mr. Kaufman still on there?
Yes.
I I I, this is Director Danziger, I just, I just wanted to ask you, has Berkeley and Oakland taken action yet? Well, two questions. One is, did they pay their initial fee and any other action they've taken?
Yes, all the seven agencies that were asked to participate have paid in the money that they want to contribute. None of the other agencies have acted on the MOU as of yet. I don't know what the status is in Oakland, but I know Berkeley is on a summer leave, and they'll consider it at their first meeting in September.
All right, thank you.
We should think about that. So I assume from the comments who have been made by the board members, there's no action going to be taken this evening.
It would be mine.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you again, Mr. Kaufman. Thanks for all your good work on addressing what we all know is a problem.
Thank you, and I hope that when other jurisdictions have taken action, we can revisit this issue.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, moving on the.
I may want to close out, directors, because I'm trying to be very particular about this. In October of twenty twenty one, we received initial indications about the formation of, at that time, East Bay Wildfire JPA. A meeting was held on December third, twenty twenty one, at which I reported out to the board. Presentation was made to the Hills Emergency Forum regarding expansion in April of twenty twenty two, at which point the we supported that as a member of the Hills Emergency Forum, however, the majority did not, which then resulted in the the progression into the current MOU, but the discussions were well underway when the they just, when the presentation to happen was made.
Yeah, but no work was done until after the that decision by Hills Emergency Forum, that's that was my point.
Okay, let's keep going.
Okay.
Nine two.
Nine point two.
Evening, directors. At the June twenty twenty three meeting, information was provided during public comment regarding Fire Safe Moraga Rinda, a new five oh one C three nonprofit formed for the purpose of furthering wildfire safety awareness and action in our community. Presentation will be provided by the group's president, Mark Evans, to provide the board with more information regarding this group's goals and an initial funding request, which is included as attachment B. Okay, Steve, you want to get started? We're waiting for Mark. Oh. Okay. Mark Evans will be. Mark Evans will be providing a presentation on this group's goals and initial funding requests, which is include his attachment B in the, uh, agenda.
Hey, thank you, uh, my name's Mark Evans, thanks for allowing me to, uh, make a presentation today. I wanted to know that there's a couple people in the audience here. Who were with me and have been collaborating with me on what we're going to be, uh, sharing with you today. I'll start with, uh, Steve Hoyt, he's the Firewise Leader in Campolinda Neighborhood, uh, well-known, well-respected by the Fire District. And also Rob Schroder, he's the Firewise Leader out of Sleepy Hollow, he's also a board member on Rescue One. So, full introduction, I'm Mark Evans, I'm the Firewise Leader for Greater Mata Vista. Which is in Northwest Rinda, Rob's in North Rinda, Steve's in Maraga. I'm also currently the Chairperson for the Rinda Firewise Council. Uh, it's in the, if you could roll down so you can see. Uh, a little bit farther down right here. Um, actually, maybe go back up, I'm sorry. So, the purpose of this presentation is to share with you first. And we mentioned this on public comments last time, that we have created the Fire Safe Maraga Rinda. Nonprofit Corporation, five oh one C three, it's been approved by the state of California. Where we've been incorporated, but we're just getting started. Um, there are some future steps, like getting taxes and IRS type of forms done, but we really have just gotten approved in, uh, June. So, as a nonprofit, what I want to make sure you all hear is. We are going to make it simple. This is going to be a very straightforward nonprofit. Uh, as counter to this, uh, our John Kaufman. Our nonprofit is, is planned and, uh, to help the residents. Who live within the Maraga Rinda Fire District. That's our focus area. Counter that to the Diablo Fire Safe Council, which has a very broad geographic area of Alameda and Contra Costa. Our focus, our purpose will be to help those who live within our community, which as we all know. Across the community is a very high fire risk. Fire Safe, Fire Safe Council. Why do we call ourselves Maraga Rinda, excuse me, Fire Safe Maraga Rinda? Well, we're trying to follow court standard. You guys have heard of Fire Safe Marin. So Marin County has a single fire safe for their whole county. They also have some of the same complications that these other organizations have, where they're coordinating multiple agencies. What we have the, why this will be quote unquote simple, is we will coordinate only with Miranda. Uh, uh, Maraga Rinda Fire District. So that's going to be a very focused area, which in my opinion, will be much more cost effective and much more focused. Really, at the end of the day, we believe this new nonprofit will be able to get much more. Fuel reduction, fire fuel reduction across our community than the other models out there of nonprofits. Now, to say that, we have been watching what other people have been doing, we've interfaced and have collaborated with, uh, West Contra Costa County. Fire Safe relatively new, we collaborate with Diablo Fire Safe, the one that Jeff Isaacs on the board. We've also, uh, collaborated with Berkeley and Oakland Fire Safe Councils, and also have connection with the California Fire Safe Council. So I guess my point is, even though we're a new Fire Safe Council, we've made. Rapid communication and, and are being welcomed into sort of the club of what these non-private Fire Safe Councils do. I guess the point I'm trying to make is, we're not creating new ground. This nonprofit will be operated and managed. Very similar to other successful nonprofits in California. Okay, so, I think I mentioned that, that, that it's a here, uh, just all Fire Safe Councils. Uh, go out for grants, large grants, state, local agencies, uh, there's multiple, um, grant opportunities out there. And, um. We will then in turn take the funds and distribute them to neighborhood groups. Just like Diablo Fire Safe Council has done. So very similar to what their, their approach is, where they make a cost sharing grant to a neighborhood. And that neighborhood works together to remove fuels in an area. Specifically, we're not going to focus on single homes initially. Actually, we don't plan to focus on single homes, we plan to focus on neighborhoods. One of the strong benefits I believe that we have here is, this approach allows us to focus on the priorities in our community. What I've noticed other Fire Safe Council doing is they're making grants all over the place. Whoever comes in, asks for money, comes up with a plan, says that we're going to do that. The benefit we have working in one community is we can focus our areas where the Fire District says, this is our highest risk. In the private properties. These are the neighborhoods, these are the specific areas, whether it's a evacuation route. Uh, uh, some open land between some neighborhoods, or some large lots that are in a neighborhood but have issues. We can develop our prioritization method for selecting grants, working in concert with the Fire District. And basically, um, prioritizing that. I'm going to stop there and ask, is there any clarifying questions? From the board?
I have one, no.
Great.
But here's my first one. Is, you know, you state right here that, and you said it that. The, any, any grants, any funds you get would be to, uh, well, it says right here, Firewise Neighborhoods. I have a concern with that.
Okay.
Um. I'm not at a Firewise neighborhood, uh, presently. Most of the people who are in our district are not, including Canyon, which I represent. Uh, on other, other areas, so. I, I don't think this is appropriate to just limit it to Firewise.
May I respond to that concern, please?
Yeah.
So, it's not that hard to become a Firewise neighbor. And we will help anyone who wants to work as a neighborhood to get a grant. We will help you become a Firewise neighborhood. The reason we strongly prefer to work with Firewise Neighborhoods is because our cost model is small. If we're just working with a bunch of neighbors, we don't really know each other, we have a lot of burden on our nonprofit to manage that. But we need a contact of neighbors to do that. I can share with you, Steve, Director Danziger, that. Uh, Diablo Fire Safe Council is taking the same approach. They're preferentially providing, uh. Sharing, cost sharing funds to Firewise Neighborhoods, which I believe for the exact same reason. We can be less more cost effective, because we can work with groups of neighbors.
So, I, I guess, well.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I, I, at least there was one, Charles Portis, I think, wrote a letter saying, you know, he's, there's an organization, I know our. The HOA where I happen to live has received grants from the Diablo Fire Safe Council, but it is at least. An organization, it has a president, it has a treasurer, it has dues, you know, so. It, there is an organization to deal with. I can understand why you would prefer to have a relatively formal organization to work with. Because otherwise, you're right, it's, it's just, it's a. An, a potentially disorganized group of individuals. So I can appreciate how much your class, but I'm not sure we should exclude other groups, I guess, is the way.
Well, but, but one, one way to think. And that's how we're setting our nonprofit up. Um, I think, uh, watching what other people are doing, it's a very cost effective approach. I guess the other tie to this, everyone, is that we are now transitioning there into Firewise Council. You've heard of that name, you know who it is, it's, uh, close to thirty neighborhoods in this district. We are now transitioning them to the Maraga Rinda Firewise Network. And we're going to leverage and partner with that organization to get the word out, work collaboratively, that sort of thing. So that's another cost saving by working with those organizations. Now, once we get going, there may be exceptions, I'll see that, but I really strongly believe. If you're not a Firewise neighborhood, you're not working as neighbors. How do we as a community solve this problem? We have to work together as neighbors, you can't do it one house at a time.
Okay, I, I would just say, it doesn't have to be one house at a time, but I, I, for one, live on a cul-de-sac. And one side of the street, uh, board is Maraga Way, and. Probably ten homes along that, they got, we're not a Firewise, but they all got together. And they hired a contractor to, uh, mitigate the areas between their homes and Maraga Way. Without being a Firewise neighbor, so. I, I have nothing against Firewise, I just think it's not appropriate to just, uh, focus on Firewise Neighborhoods. That's all.
Okay.
And, and I've heard from, uh, folks that I represent in Canyon, and they have upset, uh, exceptions to this too. They, they don't think it's, it's okay. Their, their area, I think it'd be hard pressed to, to, uh, create a Firewise area, you could try, that, somebody could try, but, um. And I think it would, it would preclude them from getting any funds in Canyon, which is one of the most critical areas in our district.
What is the, uh, minimum, or practically speaking. The lowest number of households that are presently in a Firewise neighborhood? That we're aware of right now?
In the recognized Firewide neighborhood in Maraga Rinda, the lowest number is.
Twelve. So.
I think, I think it's eight officially that has been.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
Whether it's eight or twelve, and it doesn't have to be one of the other, but if you. Uh, given your concerns, and I think that they're entirely valid, that you want to minimize. In other words, having, you know, different conversations with eight different individuals, and you want to have. A point person, you want to have a point person that can really, uh, effectively communicate with. And specify what needs to be done, and that the money is being used to help them are going to be targeted. And wisely used rather than wasted. So, wouldn't it be possible to say? Uh, we're not going to exclusively, um. In other words, it's not a precondition that you be a organized and recognized Firewise neighborhood. But you have to be pretty close in terms of having the organizational structure, the commitment to coordination, uh, the point person. All the other criteria that you have, whether it's a homeowners association, or, uh, you know, some neighborhood like Mr. Porches is the. You know, assuming that they're as organized as they are. And then you could have a minimum number without, without a certain flexibility, because if you had eleven or seven people that came together. Uh, you know, they might have to bear in mind that they might have to get to standing fine for good reason. A Firewise Association that has fifty, because that might mean a lot more cost effective. But that's one of the things that you, that your organization would have to exercise the discretion to do. And if you had that flexibility, I'm guessing that you might get. Uh, a bit more support among. Uh, majority of the board here. I mean, I am inclined, I, I'm very much inclined to support. I, I, I know what Mark Evans and Rob and Steve are capable of doing, I know what kind of commitment that you have and how much. Effort and time that you put into this. I want this organization to be able to work. Um, but there are some considerations and, uh, are, you know. M O F D Council actually put them in writing, I don't know whether they want to not waive attorney-client privilege by giving you a list of questions. But, you know, one of which is that, um. Technically is. The nonprofit appears to still be in the process of formation, and any formal decision should await the completion, is, is it actually certified by?
Yes, we have our approved articles in preparation.
So that is a consideration, it's no longer.
Well, that's not quite correct, a- as, uh, Mr. Evans pointed out earlier. Uh, there's still a number of tax things, et cetera, they're still in the formation process, they have been, they are incorporated. Uh, but there are still found for, as you mentioned, if you're starting out.
Right, so I guess what you're saying is, if I make my own self-donation to this organization, I can fill out the tax work.
I, 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 I'm not, it's not a criticism, it's simply a comment.
To actually fill out, I, basically, okay, I need to open a bank account. And I will file with the IRS.
Yeah, no.
I have a, excuse me, I do have an IRS.
Legal issues and policy issues, and as I understand it, the legal issues are not insurmountable. I think that we have an obligation to deal with the policy issues, well, I don't think those are insurmountable either.
Alright, but just to clarify, we do have an employee identification note, so we filed with the IRS. We're, in my opinion, we're a corporation, but we do need to go through the steps so that we could actually collect money and distribute.
Right, okay, so. Uh, a- and I, I looked at the breakdown of the costs, and I think fifty thousand dollars of those are for administrative costs and. Part-time folks and a website and all that, correct? Uh, is that, how soon does that check need to be written or to get things rolling?
Actually, what I request first is a representative from the Fire District as a Board Director. I think that's a very important starting point, and nothing against you directors, but I don't think it's appropriate for a director to join our board. I know this is a big ask to the chief in his department, um, because I know they have so much on their plate. So if they're unable to fill that, I just need to know that and go forward, but I think there's a lot of value of having. Uh, M O F D representative on our board, I think will be better, stronger, and avoid issues, um, going forward. Uh, and, but I'm not saying that that's an absolute must, the chief and Jeff Isaacs, everyone in that department is very helpful with this, or I can get advice. Which I've asked in behind the scenes, but ultimately, I'm asking today, can you let me know if that's possible?
And I think that's a reasonable ask, so again, without waiving attorney-client privilege. Uh, question number one, having a board member on the board of a nonprofit raises a host of legal issues.
So he's not asking. It's done. Yeah, so I think we all, it sounds like we all agree.
Two, is asking staff to be on the board raises a different set of issues. Uh, including issues of conflict of interest and command and control, and your recommendation was against that, correct?
That is correct, uh, and, uh, but to be clear, it's, it's not per se illegal, I just want to. Be a little careful in the words here. My concern is that. You know, you're going to have an organization that is, you know, quite parallel to this organization in a lot of ways, and I. I, I feel that the more appropriate structure here would be for the board to appoint maybe a liaison. Not someone on the board or advisor or something, because I'm very concerned. You know, there's money changing hands here at some point potentially. Uh, and, and so, my concern is to involve staff in that. Now, I hadn't really thought about the chief himself, but I have a, have a hunch, the chief is probably not going to volunteer for that job anyway.
Uh, at some point, not interrupt you, but I want to have the chiefs able to put on this here, because in addition to legal. Just policy, there's chain of control, and there's, uh, uh, prior to.
Yeah.
Uh, so, what, how do you feel?
Uh, let me just say one thing before the chief.
Sure, go ahead.
Going on what you said. I, I don't think the, a board member should be on this.
Absolutely.
I think that's a step. But also staff, our staff is thin right now, I mean, their responsibilities, everyone is doing so much work there and. I don't feel, besides conflict of interest, I think they have so many responsibilities right now, I wouldn't want to put it on any of our staff members. Personally, including the chief, except, you know, a liaison, fine would be, but I wouldn't want to give this. I think this is a, a nonprofit, we would support it how we could, but, um, I don't see us actively participating.
Well, we already have one participating in the Diablo Fire Safety Council.
Correct, we don't fund, we, we don't pay dues, we don't fund, the Diablo Fire Safety Council is exclusively funded by state grants. And so, our, having Jeff serve there means we have a voice advocating for funds to our community. Um, but because no district funds flow that way, it's, it's strictly a one-way valve flowing this way.
But from a time perspective, which is the only point you paid, right?
Time.
From a time perspective, we are spending time.
Oh, yes, sir, oh, one percent, we, there are other groups such as the Hills Emergency Forum. They consume a bunch of our time, and it's not particularly clear in the case of, of some of the public landowners, what the return on that investment is, I, I. Appreciate the concern about the staff's time, because I, I do try to very jealously. Guard where and how that time is spent, because there is a finite amount of time available, and there are specific objectives and priorities. That we're trying to carry out, and we try to avoid being distracted. Um, and as I said, the phone rings a lot this time of year with people either having an ask, a request for a speaker, et cetera, et cetera. Um, to Director Romer's point, the, uh. I, I would, I don't think it would be a good idea, um, and I would object to having a, a staff member on the board that could vote. About the distribution of district funds, I think that's a bad idea, would not be setting that staff member up for success. Uh, the, the broader question, though, that would be helpful to have the board's direction is. If there is a desire to engage in these activities with district funds, and, and the district has been a, a. Great recipient of volunteer support, the, the folks who are here today have done things we cannot do. When it comes to organizing neighborhoods, our Fire Adapted Community Ambassadors, of which they're all been very active, along with other members of the community. Have increased the reach of the district and have gotten our message and our information. Into homes in a way we are simply not equipped to do, and as we shared earlier with the example of, uh, of an inspector apparently having missed. Some violations on the other side of the property, there are times when the Fire Adapted Community Ambassadors, particularly with the turnover of our specialists. A new specialist versus a seasoned vac A, I'm going to go with. A new specialist versus a seasoned vac A, I'm gonna go with the seasoned vac A is probably a a. Better received, better informed, and more influential dispenser of information with members of our community, so there's a tremendous amount of good work that's occurring there. Um when we get to the question of the distribution of funds, however, the question I would pose for the board. Is, is this a space that we want to be involved, and that being the distribution of funds for the purpose of mitigation? And i- if the answer to that question is yes, then I I do think we need to do a much deeper dive in the analysis to determine. Is it more efficient for that to be done as a district function, or is it more efficient? To outsource that function via um a nonprofit, through direct grants, through some other third party, because. When it comes to the distribution of funds, the expenditure of those government funds, the restrictions do not change. If they're expended by a nonprofit or if they're expended by the district, and so I do have concerns about creating another layer of oversight. And and I'm not suggesting that this would happen, but the Maraga Community Foundation example is is not too distant in the past, meaning there would definitely need to be oversight. There were audits, controls, et cetera, which does produce uh a burden that that would have to be lifted by somewhere in a way. That an internal system, we already have those controls in place, so I I do, I. If this is something that the board desires the district begin to do, which we have not done heretofore. If it is, it would be, I think it would be very helpful. That with that direction to be able to do a deep dive on the relative pros and cons of whether this was brought in-house. And if we're creating positions in-house, is it more efficient to create them externally? I I I think that's gonna be a very nuanced answer, that's gonna require layers of analysis, because on one hand. Um it is probably cheaper to pay a part-time external person to do this, agreed. But I think we need to account for the fully burdened cost included any potential oversight. Since these are still district funds and we are still accountable for their expenditure regardless of how they are routed.
Is that a report that you'd feel comfortable delivering in our next, uh August?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I guess I would push back, so we have a government agency that is not a nonprofit, that has. You know, expensive labor, all kinds of requirements for how, what kind of labor we have to hire, what kind of rates we have to pay, a lot of things, a lot of overhead. And I I have, I would challenge you to find a single government agency that is more efficient than a nonprofit in doling out money.
A motivated nonprofit.
Yes, a- a- and and a local, strictly homegrown nonprofit. Cuz I put that, my gut feel is that it'll be dramatically cheaper to do it a different way, we can have all the oversight we need to have, they have to have. Just like the Devil's Star State Council has to have, you know, the audits and all that kind of stuff, but those aren't necessarily expensive, they just happen. They would use the same order that the Devil's Fire State Council uses, maybe they use exactly the same practices, the same criteria for. I'm I'm assuming you're you're gonna do something like this, you know, you take the before and after pictures, you have a plan, keep track of your hours, I mean, the. Time sheet you have to fill out, it's not a lot of overhead burden to actually hand out the money, and the number, if if we wanna look at the city of Arinda, for example. As the poster child of how not to give out a single dollar of the hundred, of the. Millions and millions of dollars they collected in major are, that's my poster child for. How how little they have spent actually making things go away. Um and and the objective of this organization is to actually make stuff go away, and so. For me, it's intuitively obvious that this is the way to do it, not to do it internally, and and I just. Can't imagine that a government organization is gonna be better at doing it than outside. Mostly volunteer organization doing.
I I don't disagree with any of those statements, sir, I just don't know the answer to them, I I do see your point that intuitively obvious, I I I agree with that in- intuitively. Um but I'm not.
But I doubt. But nobody, but nobody, I would defy you to be able to actually go figure out the economics of the two. It's just not possible to do. Because you're gonna have to make a zillion assumptions about what what the costs are gonna be, how efficient the people are, how motivated they are. Are they gonna work overtime for free, are they gonna work overtime for overtime, those kinds of things? And the answer is, if you're in the government agency, all those things happen, and if you're in the volunteer agency, they don't. Sorry.
May I retract my request for uh representing from MLFD?
Wisely said.
And I would like to say that I'm fully committed to very transparent communication records, there are. I, as Craig mentioned, we've been uh watching closely with Devil Fire Save, they hire an outside. Um accounting firm to prepare and confirm all of their records and we will share those. Whether we get funding from the fire district or not. And we are part of your community, and we are planning to be very transparent with the entire community, where this nonprofit gets funding and how it's spent. And hopefully, at the end of the day, you'll all say, hey, that was, that nonprofit's helping us make our community safer from wildfire.
Other directors have.
So we just gave thirty-five hundred dollars to the uh to the Fire Safe Council of.
Oakland Fire Safe Council.
Yes, thank you. Let's just hear, um. I wasn't here for the meeting when they did that, so I wasn't part of the discussion about whether it was legal or not, or whether they had a. You know, sufficient documents or paid taxes or had oversights and I I don't know, we asked all those questions.
I guess we should have had.
But we gave them money, and so it seems to me that we already set the precedent. Um and the question, this is an organization that is being formed at the moment, and we have to decide if it's a it's a community organization that has a, assuming it has a church. Yeah, at what point do we, are we gonna feel comfortable, uh you know, supporting the formation and the and and the birth of this organization?
I really am trying to take a chance. I mean, if things don't go well, and I think the chances of that are one percent, five percent. We have the ability to be able to pull back, going, this is not a one-way street.
I mean, I I actually don't know under what terms we would be giving money, so I can't quite answer that, but um. Because I don't know what the relationship formally would be, um but um you know. Uh it seems to me you are talking about, just to be clear, sort of two different things, one is potential uh support for establishment. And the other is a grant-making function. Uh and there are actually really three, because the second would be the 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 executive director, et cetera, the staffing or whatever. So there are three different things, that they all have differing levels, and it seems to me in in the kind of oversight. That's really necessary, right, because, you know, uh first of all, money matters, and so three thousand five hundred dollars is not a hundred and fifty, or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's not three thousand five hundred. So, uh you know, just to be clear, but but second, it seems to me that. Grant-making functions are um, i- i- if it's our money, that is, uh. I would argue require quite a reasonably high level of oversight because of.
Completely.
Any any number of things could go wrong, uh you know, I I I think that is less true to some extent of helping. Put together an organization like this, if that's your support, so I I think there, I would just say that. And by the way, today, again, we're only on for discussion today, to be clear, there's nothing to approve today.
Oh, okay, is that, oh, good.
Stretching the staff, so so everybody could relax just a little here, this is really truly a discussion. Um but the, you know, I would argue that you have sort of three decisions to make, and and I actually think. That Mr. Evans is 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 essentially not even asking you to make the jump to the. To the funding with the grants just yet, he's really asking for your buy-in at a lower level at this point, at this moment. Uh at least that's how I perceive what you're saying.
Which is the name of I.
Well, I I, you know, I guess I see that a lot of this is in uh we're informing you, um and. We're looking to work with you, I mean, this is shouldn't be a surprise to anybody that, you know, we're sending ourselves up through this. Um in parallel to this, we've been talking to the city of Arinda, Maraga, the council, we'll be making grant requests to state agencies and other things like that. We are trying to bootstrap our way up, and if we don't get funding from you today or next month or ever, we will still go forward. And we want to go forward, working with you to um. I don't need to keep, you guys know, we wanna do what you guys are doing.
I mean, there's many organizations in this community, Rescue One. Nonprofit works with us, we don't give them any funding, they provide funding to us. Um I'm involved in the city of Arinda, Arinda Parks and Rec Foundation, Arinda Foundation, you know, there's other groups that. We support, you know, we we attend meetings and things like that, but we don't give them any funding, they raise the funds and give it back to. Uh the the agencies and the parks of rec or wherever, so that's how I see this.
I'll comment though, as you budgeted five hundred thousand dollars for wildfire prevention. And you don't wanna be the city of Arinda that's just hiring staff. You would really like to see actual work get done, and maybe you have budgets to do a lot of other stuff. But the community would like to see more fuel reduction work done, we believe as a nonprofit, we're gonna help you meet those goals.
Oh, I I agree, and I think we would support you. Just like we support Rescue One and these other organizations I mentioned.
Insert and all those, yeah. So we give money to.
Yeah, I mean, I see, my hope, my expectation would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of seed money. That puts you on the road to getting grant money, that gives us a return on that investment is multiples of the risk we take, and we're always taking this. But I also want the chief to be comfortable with this, so I want the chief to have a chat at the time, uh uh. To put in writing any report that he needs to make in order to point out what pitfalls we may have with. Uh challenges it presents to him, and I wanna make sure the chief's comfortable with this, I don't know if he's listening to this.
I am sure, I was just clarifying that cert uh sixty-five hundred dollars uh is our total contribution to cert. The the majority of the cert funding comes from barrel sales and other.
Do we audit them?
Take answer.
Do we audit them?
What do we do with cert money, I don't believe so.
Point me.
Well, but a difference in quantity is a difference in quality, I mean, you get away with not, or, you know, I don't need somebody to get ten dollars.
Yeah.
Hundred fifty thousand dollars is a kind of fish.
Lawyers don't be in quantities, they deal in facts and and principles.
Um well, I. Well, I would argue quantity matters, uh in in the sense that 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 smaller grants are subject to less scrutiny, and that's just the reality. Uh but um I would say what I think the board needs to figure out. Is, you know, is is how to sort of, what's the next step here, you know, um and um how to. I think, I mean, it seems to me everybody is at this point on the same page about not having a formal board member who is either staff or. Or or a board member of this board, uh and I think that's the right call, um the, you know, I think, I think. You know, the the next question is really. What I'm concerned about a little bit, and I just wanna be clear about this, cuz I also don't want Mr. Evans to misunderstand my concern. I've got no policy view on this at all, other than cooperation's the thing, uh the uh uh but. Uh it is, I want to make sure that this gets out of the gates with the proper guardrails, uh because. Without that, and with the proper, it's difficult, you're right in the community, but there has to be a bit of an arms-length relationship. I mean, the I understand the the push and pull of that, but but that. Before you fund it, you know, in substantial amount, you know, uh that there's a clear proposal. That uh that it's an open process in some way, you know, that we know what we're funding, and I I realize, Craig, you're you're thinking. Gee, that's exactly what we did last month on the thirty-five hundred bucks, but.
I I realize the scrutiny is different for larger projects.
Yes, I guess, the, you know, and and I think that's to the benefit of 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 both the the nonprofit and to the board. Because you are on very parallel tracks, and so you want to create structures that are very transparent, that don't lead folks to. Accuse either side of 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 favoritism of any number of isms, uh so so that's my only. Broad point is 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 that, and then I think the secondary point i- is really, you know. To be clear that, you know, that this is the best route for the funding if if you are, if you are using your funding. Or, of course, it's a very different thing if they're getting other funds, cuz at that point, they're doing God's work and we don't have to be involved at all as far as that goes, but.
And the details you're asking for is the criteria by which grants will be given out, in other words. Put it in writing as to whether or not you have to be a formal fireworks group, clear in writing as to how the means tested, in other words, needs-based. I don't think, you know, that sort of thing is.
Well, I I think eventually that's the question, I think there's an earlier question than that on the organ, on the, i- if you're gonna give money for the. Seed money, we'll call it, for the for the creation of the organization itself, it's, what are you creating, what's, I mean, I I think we've heard verbally, what's the purpose? But I seems to me you want something in writing and.
It should be in writing. Spoken like a lawyer.
Uh, you know, uh and 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 so, and I guess I would encourage you to um. You know. It it strikes me that the way this goes in order is number one, you build. The the organization, the organization develops criteria for grants and all this sort of thing, you would want. I think to be sure that if if it's your money at least that's being used.
Our part of the money would have our rules.
Yeah, uh you know, and you'd have to make sure that there is sufficient oversight, I don't know what that is or costs.
I'm sure the grants we get from the state have very specific criteria.
They they do, and they go on for pages. Own very owners, they're complying with, I mean, Mary spends a tremendous amount of time, Glorian's very involved, the. Jeff and Dennis spend quite a bit of time, they're getting and um dispensing state money is is.
But very, but all we have to do is do, we can add, not similar, not extensive, not whatever, but we can add reasonable criteria to the grants. And when we do it to them, so that they can, you know, it has to be simply in the district, and I can think of a whole list of things that, you know, we can. We can put criteria, if you want the money, here's the criteria for the money, and they can choose to take the money or not, just like we can, don't we have to vote on taking grants?
We do, that's.
So, you know, and they can choose to take our money or not if it has certain restrictions on it. But that's later, the first thing we have to do is, instead of having individuals have to go form organizations in the community. We need to decide as a board if we think that's a good idea, and the things he's presented to date make sense, and so we can. I I guess what I'd like to understand is, what do we think is necessary at our next board meeting? To be able to feel comfortable giving seed money to an organization that my gut says is gonna be beneficial to the community. Um and so I, and I, so that's what I'd like to understand from the chief or the lawyers or whatever. So that we can actually have something we could all feel comfortable and like we're doing our appropriate duty to vote on next time.
Is that fair enough?
Yeah, well, let me, let me try to, I'll toss something out, but 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 see, I mean, this is really also, this is really the chief's call, I mean. It seems to me what we'd like to have something in writing from the nonprofit that gives the chief time then to assess it. Uh in terms of, you know, cost effectiveness, other concerns, and me for that matter, on legal concerns. Uh you know, uh and then come back to the board with a staff and attorney analysis. On that, and. I think certainly what counsel said, but the first question is, and I I think the right way of looking at it was the three phases, so. If there is board interest in providing funds that can be used to start up um. The the entity, uh or there is board money, uh district money that could be used to sustain. Uh the staff portion of the entity, I think those are two very different discussions that would be helpful to have board direction about, is this one-time or is this ongoing? I presume, yeah, the the uh the nonprofit would like to know that too, so they could make plans, potentially multi-year plans. But then the third question, which is is a policy question, is whether or not the board is interested in getting into the business of. Dispensing fuel mitigation grants, which we have not done to date, our our grants have been limited to home hardening retrofits, because those are one-time money. And that are um, the district has been, and we're, I think, pushing fourteen million dollars or so. In um in external grants that we've brought in, but all of our fuel mitigation efforts have been outreach, education, and enforcement. We have not been in the in the business of dispensing fuel mitigation grants, so that would be a significant departure. If the Fire Safe Maraga Rinda uh were going to be funded, at least in part, or the primarily initially. By by the fire district, and if so, that that that's a policy direction or decision around which we would need directions, so that I would make sure I was operating within. The board's intent when we were putting together the the pros and cons, that that's a significant change, though, and as I've shared with the board before. Uh I do have concerns uh about fuel mitigation incentives, uh because one, the the need. Uh district-wide is significantly going to exceed anything the district could endeavor taking on. Uh even in the cost share mode, is this is not, this is a large district, and there's there's quite a bit of fuel mitigation to be done. And I am worried about the moral hazard that if we begin to dispense fuel mitigation incentive money. Does that then create some downward pressure on folks saying, I will wait until incentives become available um for me? And in the current environment, when people say, are there resources available, we have a very stock answer, which. We have a very stock answer, which is there's Dalvo Fire Safe, there's Firewise, et cetera, but by and large. The onus for maintaining the property rests with the resident as as part of the cost of maintaining a property in California.
We don't give grants, we have a free chipper program. We spend how much a year and how much we send so far on the free chipper program, which is incredibly popular. And incredibly utilized to the point that we have to, you know, so, so the idea that we don't. Physically support and financially support fuel mitigation is not true, in my opinion.
Uh, I I meant to direct cash disbursement, sorry.
Mitigation support is mitigation support in my book. Okay, so we we spend district money to make stuff go away. Uh, in addition to telling people to make things go away or enforcing codes to make things go, we actually spend district money. Stop homes from burning down and to make things go away already. We already give away. Bents, and and they're one time, so are grants, you know, there's no guarantee that that an organization is going to get a grant a second year. It's all just money. It's money that motivates people to go do things and. HOAs don't wait around and I I was the president of our board for, I don't know, six years and. We didn't wait around saying, oh, we're going to wait till we get a Dalvo Fire Safe grant to do the work. You did the work anyway, and you made the application and now and you got one. And most of the time you didn't get one. So I I personally don't think it is a a disincentive that people are going to wait until they get it, because no, first off, there isn't enough money to go around. Everybody knows that. But there are people that need the money, there are need people that need the incentives. And, you know, that's the whole reason major R, I mean, what sixty seven percent of the people in the city of Arinda voted for major R, because I actually heard. Because they believed in spending city money that they were going to pay to make things go away. So there's a lot of public support for the concept in my opinion. And to take public money that the public's given. And spend it on that same public to make things go away, I think is a very popular concept, and I think it's something that the whole community has gotten around.
We've heard a lot about five foot zone. Now, in addition to getting my one sixteenth inch vent screen, which I installed myself. And in addition to installing gutter guards, which I bought and installed myself. Uh, motivated by your discussions about the importance of the two foot and the five foot zone. I went out and I bought a whole bunch of gravel rock. So that in the front of my house, in addition to the brick and the decomposed granite. I now have zones of gravel. That's pretty cheap. And that's a one-time deal. That's not fuel mitigation, but if we, if. Among the other things that the uh organization decided to do is to say, okay. Let's find out whose house is going to be protected by a permanent installation of five feet of gravel rock. Would that make you feel better about the moral hazard issue?
I I think there's a very big difference between one-time retrofits, uh, as with the vents and the gutter guards. Uh, I suspect aggregate would. Fall in that that same area um.
You'll have to cut trees down one time.
Is there a hundred thousand dollars doesn't buy very many trees though? And trees are almost never required as a removal, and I I would also, as we've talked about before, trees are. Primarily not the challenge as far as the few most likely to carry the fire in this community.
But it is something we go out and enforce, and it's that we have a specific list of trees is, but I think it's actually the number one thing. That we we promote, so can't talk out of both sides of our mouth about whether they're, I know they're not as important, I get that, but that's not what the public thinks. And because that's why we put them up there. So I guess my whole point is, we we as a board have to decide if we want to give money, and and you're calling exactly the right question. We have to decide if this organization wants to be in the business. Of supplying some of our public money raised from our local citizens. To go back to the citizens to help them remove fuel or not. That's what the board has to decide. That's the policy question.
Yes, ar- armed with that, I think we would be much better positioned to do some analysis about. Pros and cons, efficiencies, et cetera. Uh, but that I, yes, sir, that is the question that, and that would be, it would be a new policy. Uh, but not to say that it's a policy that couldn't be done, I think council's been clear. It is permissible, uh, but we, I do need some board direction about the the sense of what the board would like to see considered.
Well, we've heard from two of us and three of us, do we have others that are inclined?
Well, I I would say, one, thank you, Mark, for the presentation and bringing this up, and I think, two, yeah, the board is very interested in um fuel mitigation. Three, I would want to see precedence of other districts that have been in the business of providing grants to citizens to remove trees if that's happened. Um, because I don't want to be the first, I don't know that I'm in a position to be the trailblazer on using public funds for those types of things, if that hasn't happened. Um, we need to think carefully about, are we the trailblazer? And I know people voted for measure R in Arinda, and it's used for a specific purpose. But when you go to talking to people about their property taxes that they paid, they didn't vote to pay them, they're paying those. That's a different type of fund that people are looking at, and I would. Want to understand, I think, what what, if any other district has done this, and I'm not saying I don't support, I just want to know what's happened before. As a board, we move forward um, spending the chief's time to look at the economics underlying.
Over the years, uh. I've observed. You know, the Firewise groups. And and I think it's an excellent way of. Doing it, one of the achieving basically our objective in terms of reducing. You know, all of the things that would reduce fire risk. Uh, I'd like to see that neighborhood because it's very apparent you. As you drive through the city, both in Arinda, you do, it's very clear where it's been organized by the community itself. To see it achieved. Uh, there's very different, I mean, very definitely. Uh, impetus, I think, on the part of the. The board, or at least myself. To support that kind of an activity because it is volunteer and you get a lot done quicker. And a lot cheaper when it's done by volunteers and it's, they have the incentive whether they need a grant or not a grant. It gets done. And then generally maintain because there's that incentive to do that because of the benefits often. In terms of insurance or other things that flow where you are recognized for having achieved a certain particular status. So I would certainly be in favor of pursuing. Doing it because I think it does support the objective of what we as a board wanted to do. When we set up the budget for five hundred thousand dollars. We spent very little on the home hardening, for the most part. I think there's been a lot more achieved in terms of reduction of fuel and so forth with the chip program. This has potential, I think, to hopefully enhance that kind of activity as well. So I, it's it's one thing that I would be in favor. Looking how we can come to an agreement in terms of how we could fund it or participate. Uh, I think it is difficult because of the conflict of interest in a sense of having board participation actively. On the, on your board. Uh, I I do get concerned if it entails a lot of time on management because they don't have. That much time to give in terms of their other priorities, so.
So what I wanted to summarize is, first of all, we want to be collaborative. It's going to be collaborative, we've already demonstrated. Uh, what used to be called the Fire West Council, now known as Baragor Rinda Firewise Network. That's the foundation that will work. People have done four years of that, the chief and other people, and we'll be got started. And we're just growing our capability with our volunteers to create this nonprofit that can help us remove fuel within the neighborhood. We need to go any further than that. I understand the funding issue complex and challenging that for this time. I'm going to revise my request to say we would like some starter. We won't even ask for anything to distribute, we just like some starter funds to help us get off the ground. And chief pointed out, others have pointed out, here's a lot of time that the right brands. Put all the paperwork in and things like that, but we would like to be hiring staff or use some consultants, whatever. We've already had some weeds from the chief, we've got weeds from City of Arinda. We'll do it as long here as we have to, it's just going to take us longer, so we're just trying to get this to make this an exact order. So I'm going to summarize the same, we're asking for small number of help as they're going. And we will definitely be writing grants. If if because of this, we should can or get funding from you. I hear the issue about Firewise, that sort of thing. Of course, I'm the Firewise Council Chair, I feel very strongly that Firewise is very capable of this. I personally will, anyone starts their own Firewise neighborhood, there's a lot of that. My vision is. Ten years from now, every single home in Maragor Rinda is in a Firewise neighborhood, working collaboratively with their neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, did you want to continue discussion or open public comment?
Okay, might we open the um, meeting for public comment?
So we have one hand raised. We also received written public comment. I'll go ahead and start with the written public comment. Charles Porges asked for me to read his written public comment into record. I strongly object to F S M O grants being dependent on joining Firewise. Any small group of neighbors should be allowed to apply. My neighbors and I are not part of Firewise. Are well organized and fire code compliant. We nonetheless did obtain a D F S C grant. We do not plan to join Firewise. All residents should be given the same opportunities and disincentives must be min- minimized. The, we received three additional written public comments. From Paula Rainman, Susan Anaker, and Susan Wetch. Uh, supporting uh the Fire Safe Moraga Rinda Council. I'll now go to our attendees, Jonathan Goodwin.
Good evening again, uh, first in response to Director Hostler's uh. Uh, question about precedence. Long time ago. When I was on the Fire Safe Council Diablo Fire Safe Council Board. Uh, um, Confire would periodically have these projects that they really wished would get done. Because the residents just weren't able to do them themselves, and Confire couldn't get anywhere close to doing these themselves. I mean, that it's just. It's too hard to explain, but it 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 doesn't work that way. Um, but what they did do was say, do we have state money coming in? Or not not state money, but money, you know, federal money coming in through the state Fire Safe Council. That we can apply to these projects. So that would be the. The avenue for for that kind of thing is not to use MOFD money for local projects, but to um. To use uh the the money from State Fire Safe Council, if you can get it. Um, so I just want to say, you know, listening to this, it's kind of funny, there's, there's, it's really a kind of uh feel your way groping kind of uh. Thing, you know, or, you know, people have had, there's a lot of people have had a lot more experience with this. I mean, I don't know why. The other people, you know, all you newcomers are so reluctant to talk to people who have, who've been doing this for so many years. Uh, to the point about Fire Safe, uh, sorry, um, requiring. Community to be fire safe to spend district money, you're taking money from the entire district, from every taxpayer and. Giving it only to a selected group who can pass your sniff test. That's not conceivable. Um, just as the the first written comment pointed out. Uh, you just have a minimum number of of people and a one-point person. Uh, you know, eight, that that's a good number, and then work work that way. I want to point out that in Canyon, fifteen years before you guys in Arinda were doing any of this stuff, we were getting grants from the Fire Safe Council for tens of thousands. You know, thirty, fifty thousand dollars. Uh, you know, not just the, and a whole bunch of these little five dollar ones. Um, i- it's, you don't have, there's nothing magic about Firewise. And you're right about, you know, residents needing to work together. They don't have to wear your, your baseball cap to do that. You know, it it's not about affiliation, it's about doing the work. That's what should be respected. I think that's just plain. And obvious. And lastly, I want to say, I think it's great that all this is is happening. Uh, that all this groping is going on, and I hope, you know, over time, it becomes a little more skillful, a little more elegant. And I look forward to seeing it develop over the years. Thank you.
And that concludes our public comment.
Yes. As I sense there's no motion.
Well, should there be direction though?
For, uh, you know, the views of the board, do you feel like you understand where the board stands on this?
I I do not. It'd be helpful to have a sense of the boards. The board sense on, I I think I have enough to 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 do some work with council. Uh, with regard to what other agencies have similar programs and lessons learned from that that can be harvested. Um, and for council to provide some thoughts on structure and so forth. Um, but the broader question about if, as a policy decision. The district is is interested in expanding our granting program beyond defensible or retrofits and the shipping service. To um, to cash transfers for fuel mitigation. I need some sense of the direction of the board, because whether we're carrying through uh Fire Safe Moraga Rinda or some other third party or through the fire district. That would be a significant deviation from what we've been doing. It'd be helpful to have a sense of the board with regard to interest in in expanding a program in that area.
Start at this and I'm. Giving our sense then.
My sense is I want to keep stay open to it. I want any and all concerns that both legal counsel and the chief. Uh, with regard to legal policy and uh accounting and auditing issues. And uh, you know, I would say. It's helpful to be guided, as Director Hasler said, by the experience of others, but again, I know your time is valuable. I don't, you know, every time we make a request, an agenda is something, it's, I know it's hours of chief's work. So if you can focus on what issues you think are helpful to us, I think you have a pretty good sense as to where I, I like to make it. Um, but I want to make it happen in such a way as we do not run into either legal or policy problems. We do not run into problems where we're burdening staff. And I think you raise a good issue and moral hazard issue as well. I think that's a great issue, and I think that ought to be addressed by our board as well. Of any and all these issues. I would appreciate a report at our next uh, August meeting and see where we go from there.
So I am supportive of. Seeing district money to provide grants. And I basically echo everything Mike said.
Basically, I concur. See, I think we had need. A little bit of more analysis in terms of. Where it's worked and how it's worked. As well as basically uh. But I think the concept of. Assisting and. Fostering more abatement activity is. I'd be in favor of.
Heard from them, I'll just, I'll just go on this past. I think you've heard what I said.
Yeah, I think I think my view would be, I think, um, we we set aside money for mitigation. For home hardening, et cetera, and I think we want to. Pursue avenues to use that money versus not use it as a district, and if this is one of the venues. Um, I think we should consider it, but I think we need to consider it carefully. I I guess I'm cautious. And in in my view on it, but I would like to understand. Like I said, the precedents, and then I would also, um, then what is the benefit going through a nonprofit versus doing it ourselves? And I, uh, because I think we've set aside, I I I think that's what the purpose of that money is for, is. Mitigation, home hardening, community safety. Or I don't know, but it's it's set aside for a specific purpose, the five hundred thousand. And this would be part of it.
And the chief said, maybe I want to speak for the chief, but I think his understanding was there is a distinction between one-time home hard.
Yeah, and maybe that's, maybe that's a, a consideration of that.
So I think that's one of the distinctions that we might want to fill into in some. Well, that's a big drop though, because that's a lot.
Everyone's been making it, there's other fire state councils out there that get state funding. And we can pursue that. And I see the complexity, you know, I guess, I personally don't want to wait another three or four months on there to do. So I think I'm just going to move my attention to find the right big brands and try to get us filled up that. I've seen the complexity. And I don't want, I want to collaborate with you. I don't want to get anything.
So I'm just.
And you are, and you're, Mark, you're doing a great job of this.
Having conflict, or I kind of want to raise my water.
I don't see this as conflict. I think that everything.
I do.
You do?
Yeah.
Well, they're, they're.
I'm going to say.
But the only conflict is, is I understand Director Danzinger's concerns about the expenditure of resources. And I think they're legitimate. I'm open to changing my mind on this, in part because of Director Danzinger's, Danzinger's concerns. But I think, I don't see this as conflict. I see this as an open-ended respectful discussion about all of the issues involved. And I think that's something we have a, a duty to do. And I don't mean that to disincentivize you because I have the highest respect for everything that you and Steve Rob and everyone else in the organization is doing. It has been transparent. It is collaborative and I hope it remains so. Go ahead.
I value the chief's time as you do. And I, I just see that this is just adding complexity. So just to get us going, we'll go out for state funding and other agencies to simplify things and get going faster. And as we get up to speed and work through those issues, we can do that. But, uh, what I really want, and I already have, is support from the fire district staff. And they answer all our questions and give us guidance and, and focus on that. So that's, I'm saying right now, let's not waste the board or the chief's time trying to figure out if you want to give us some funds for fuel reduction. Uh, we just want to get up and running and, and prove ourselves to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe just a question on that. What would the request be of us?
What was the question?
What would the request be?
Can I just suggest maybe we should talk to Mr. Evans, um, you know, between times and, and which we've been doing, by the way. And, 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 and talk that through a little bit, uh, uh, because I've got some thoughts on that as well, but I, I don't.
Shame that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and just to make sure we're, you know, surprises next month. So where we were leaving this mark was items, the, the last, the three items, the, I assume.
Yes. And, and, I mean, I can even leave that. And this, I don't want to, um, what I heard today.
Thank you.
What I heard today is you do need to understand this a little better, that sort of stuff. So I'm trying to figure out how to get this thing moving. So I'm going to go after, I'm going to spend our time, volunteer time writing grants, and maybe that will solve the issue going forward to get us bootstrapped up. And I agree with, uh, Jonathan, that there's some sideline discussions, strategizing, understanding the parameters offline that can be presented to future board meetings is the way to go. But I got good direction, no director, understand why. And we're going to go ahead and start putting our energy into state grants right now.
Thank you.
That doesn't mean we can't discuss giving him seed money to be able to go support our community to do those things, to get state grants, for example.
Uh, no, I, I mean, I'm assuming that's exactly what you'll be discussing.
By the public, create a comment.
And, and so we've already opened up and, uh, opened public comment. And since there's no motion, we, we don't need to open it again.
Okay. All right. And we'll proceed on to, uh, point three.
Director is noting that good time we've been running. If I could ask for a, a short break, while council done, use the restroom.
I'm. Can you unmute me? The time is nine thirty-eight and we have, uh, taken a, a break, five minute break.
That ended up with a market value at June thirty, twenty twenty-three of ten million, three thousand dollars. This is the most recent balance and reflects an investment gain in fiscal year twenty twenty-three of approximately one point one million dollars. So with that, I will turn it over to Ira Summer, who is the senior consultant with Gov Invest.
Okay, thank you. Um, so again, I'm here to, to talk about the pension, uh, your pension plan, where, where it is, what's happened, and where it looks like it's going, moving on with the future. If we go to the next slide. Uh, so basically, we're going to talk about the changes since the last pension, the previous valuation report. Uh, do some cost projections and then talk about the impact of your section one fifteen trust. And I'll explain what that is to the extent that you're not, uh, yeah, that you may not remember. Uh, I understand you don't deal with pension issues every day. This is not a pension board. It's a fire district board. So I will try and translate all the pension talk into, uh, English as we go along through this next slide. Uh, so what's happened since the previous valuation, um, go to the next one after that. The, the, the one thing that has the biggest impact on your pension costs over time are investment returns. Depending on how the markets are going, investment returns, uh, the money coming into the plan, uh, somewhere between sixty and ninety percent of the money coming into the plan will be due to investment returns. So, uh, what that means over the long term, the fact that you're investing as a long-term entity through Cessara uh, is a good thing, keeps your cost down. The bad part of that is when the markets are volatile. And that is exactly what the markets have been for the last decade. Uh, your costs will be moving up and down from year to year as they go through this. And so Sarah does their best to try and level these costs out over time. Uh, but the world's been crazy. So, uh, this graph here shows the market value of returns on a year-by-year basis. Um, the Cessara does their actual evaluations on a calendar year basis. So as of December thirty-first of each year, uh, those amounts that are done on that calendar year basis are then used for to determine what you pay on your fiscal year basis, beginning July one of each year. So the December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two actual evaluation by Cessara determines your contribution rates you're making this year. The, uh, the return in, uh, the year ending, uh, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, uh, was a loss of about ten, ten and a half percent of the year. Um, this is consistent with what we have seen from pension funds across the country. Twenty twenty-two in terms of investment year was a terrible year, almost unprecedented in the last fifty years. Pretty much every asset category, except potentially commodities, lost money in twenty twenty-two. So it did not matter what they did with the money, they were going to lose it. Um, we have two lines going here. The solid, sorry, bars are the, are the market value of assets. Actually, what's happening with their, the true value of the assets. The orange line shows the, uh, the actuarial value of assets. What Cessara does to try and smooth out your contribution rates over time is they take the investment return that is higher or lower than the assumed rate of return, uh, which is a little less than seven percent. And they, uh, take them out and they spread it out over a five-year period. So they know that the world is going to be volatile. They try and take, to use that volatility and not make your costs quite that volatile by smoothing out uh, returns over a five-year period. And you'll notice that by doing that smoothing, the, at the actuarial value of returns has been a lot more consistent than the market value returns on a year-by-year basis. And by doing that, trying to keep your costs relatively steady over time. Next slide. Uh, so again, that's the biggest thing that's happened. So what we did is we took the, you know, your June thirty, two thousand twenty-two, sorry, December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two, uh, actual evaluation report, uh, not quite out yet. So, uh, we did some projections moving forward. Um, and what we did to get that, and we also assume moving forward that they're going to hit their targets. Each year, they're going to hit their assumed grade of return, um, each year moving forward. The.
So you realize they've, for the last twenty years, on average, have not done that. Uh, that's the whole reason we have this time, literally. Is because consistently they earn at least, it used to be almost a whole percent less, and now it's going to be a half a percent less than their target.
Yes. Okay. And, and what's happened, um, if, and I don't, I don't have the historic numbers here. Um, so I'm doing this mostly from my head, uh, which is a bad place to keep information. Uh, but, um, if, if we, during the, the eighties and nineties, uh, Cessara's returns beat their target most of the years during that time period. Uh, beginning right around two thousand with the dot com bubble bursting, uh, we started seeing a lot of volatility. One of the reasons that's happened is because the money in Cessara is invested in a combination of basically fixed income, bonds, and equity stocks, uh, with a lot of, uh, detail in how that's being done. The, the money that was in fixed income, which was, I think is about, uh, in the past had been as much as fifty percent. I think it's down to about thirty-five percent right now, about a third. Um, back when I started doing pension consulting, right around nineteen eighty, the, uh, bonds were earning twelve, fourteen percent. Uh, interest rates have been coming down pretty consistently during that time period. So that when we got to twenty twenty, February twenty twenty, the Fed dropped the interest rates down to zero, pretty much. So that when we got to twenty twenty, February twenty twenty, the Fed dropped the interest rates down to zero pretty much. So with a third of their money earning close to nothing, two thirds of their money needed to get to basically earn enough to get them to their roughly seven percent assumed grade of return target. To do that, it became more difficult. They they took a little more risk in their investments, which is why we have the volatility that's happened since two thousand. And also still with the rates continuing to drop, they had more and more trouble doing that. Now, good news, the Fed has been raising interest rates this past year in their attempt to save us from inflation by killing the economy. And so, once they're done doing that, which should be happening, we think they're going to be raising interest rates one more time at their meeting that's coming up right, you know, very soon. They they're basically a little bit over five right now. They're probably going to stay there. That means the fixed income portion of Cessara's investments are probably going to earn closer to five percent, which makes it much easier to hit the target that they have right now. And what we expect to happen moving forward again is that they will, they'll have more success in hitting their target. They will probably even lower the risks of some of their investments in order to more consistently hit those targets.
Except that their bond portfolio during the last year, it's same thing that happened to all the banks. They got hammered.
Absolutely.
You know, so there it was horrible time to be in bonds the last year.
Yes, absolutely was. But once the pain is over.
Yeah. Now you're starting with a the low asset base and having to grow it at the five percent.
And and yes, and yeah.
The the thing that's not understandable to me is we got, there's a lot of the Cessara send us where the, if you looked at the last four years, it was like four percent. A one percent thing normally deviation produces about thirty thousand or thirty million addition to the unfunded pension liability. And that's not reflected in these forecasts. That's what I just don't understand.
The actual, in other words, the actuarial valuation, because they smoothed this so much, isn't actually they're smoothing out a whole lot of negative things that it's not obvious. Well, the good news is
Right. And and so that's one of the reasons why we've got this projection that I'm showing right here. And what this projection shows that to the extent that they hit the target, their assumed target. And so far for this year, investment returns for the first six months of two thousand twenty three have been strong. Right. They are ahead of target so far for this year. I'm not going to make any bets for the rest of the year because every time I do, something goes wrong. But basically, right now, things look okay for this year. So I think, and yeah, so we assume conservatively for now as a baseline, what happens if they hit their targets moving forward, what these two lines show? The blue line is if they hadn't lost the ten and a half percent in two thousand twenty two, where and then they have just hit their targets, you would have gotten to a hundred percent funded roughly in two thousand twenty seven. Instead, because they had this one loss, this one big loss, they're smoothing out over the five year period. Your unfunded liabilities will stay relatively steady, right around thirty million for the next five years before starting to come down and will get to about two thousand thirty nine. Yeah, so it's about twelve years later that you're going to end up getting to a hundred percent funded. So this one year of bad return, and again, it's very bad return because it's not just that they lost, let's call it ten percent. They were expecting to make roughly seven percent. The difference seventeen percent, one sixth of their portfolio.
Yes, and it's called one percent return differences, a difference of thirty million in the unfunded pension liability. I mean, it shoots out huge.
Yes.
Going down. I mean, in evidence, you know, the seven million dollar hit is the error in terms of contribution. That's going to go even higher. So in order to make up for the hit, you know, the last five year history.
Right. If we go back, if we go back one slide, see again, five year history, the year, the two thousand twenty one was very strong. So two thousand twenty one, they earned about fourteen percent. Two thousand nineteen, they earned about fourteen percent also. So those those two years were solid. So if we look at the last five years, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one, they were above their target. Two thousand twenty two, below their target by a lot. That undoes a lot of the good that happened during those three years.
Well, I mean, Lori Ann, that that letter that we got that said for the last four years, it was less than four, around four percent a year. I'm trying to, the information that we've got
Seventy seven.
Is just doesn't make sense.
So they've been earning the average of all that is seven percent a year. But I think if you look back, again, I know that at least from twenty twenty until now, they have not earned as much as the S and P five hundred has. They, you know, and it's because they invested in, you know, forest products and international assets and a whole but and a whole lot of private equity, which actually can be pretty good, makes them delay their disclosure a lot, but the the reason that we set up the fund in the first place was because they historically had earned roughly a percent less than their target was. What that means for us is their normal cost that they bill us is lower than it should be, but we end up having to make it up. And so, and which they sent us a bill for, but you know, the bills can vary dramatically. I mean, millions of dollars a year up and down, even though we do all this nice smoothing, it still changes a lot.
Okay, well, we'll get to, well, you're talking about the why you set up the one fifteen trust, the question, and part of the question is what you should be doing with the one fifteen trusts and how much you should have it moving forward. Let's let's hold that off for just a moment. Let's get through the basic projections, which right now are without the one fifteen trust. I have a set of projections, including the one fifteen trust to show the difference. And then we can talk about what is the, you know, given what you find out what your goals are for that one in trust and try and set up a policy so that you can use it effectively to protect you against the downside return and hit your goals a little bit faster. Okay, so let's go a couple of slides ahead now, back to where we were over here. Next slide. We're talking about your funded percentage. Again, this is the same message I talked about before, that basically you're expected to hit a hundred percent in two thousand twenty seven. But because of one bad year, that's going to push it out to about two thousand twenty nine. And again, your funded percentage because of that one bad year, because of the five year smoothing, instead of taking steady progress up to a hundred percent over the next decade, is going to start over for the next five years, staying steady at about eighty five percent before starting to move on.
To twenty thirty nine, right? Is that what you said?
Twenty thirty nine, twelve year difference. Well, but it's one really, really bad year. For most pension funds, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty one was one of the top five best years it's had historically. Two thousand twenty two is one of the bottom five best years most pension funds have across the country. So that's because what's happening in the global market. And they want to be in a lot of different asset classes to protect against different things that are happening across time. Sometimes that's a great idea. Sometimes it just, you know, hurts your return.
And and these numbers are just assuming we meet, they meet their return.
They meet their target.
Okay.
Basically, there's
Not actual returns for twenty twenty three, right?
Just that. Right, right. I assume, I I don't know what's gonna happen. I, yeah. Right. I I bought a Powerball ticket. I don't know what the winning numbers really are. It's probably just a waste of my two dollars, but. Okay, so the next slide. What that means for your contribution. Based on the two thousand twenty one valuation report, your contribution, which was just under six billion, was expected to go up for a couple of years for leveling off and coming down to about the two million level. Again, because of this one year bad return phased in over the next five years, your contribution, required contribution is going to go up in steps up to about nine million dollars. So jumping significantly because of that one year of contributions, one year bad return.
What is that makes so weird, you know, after twenty thirty three, it isn't a relative, you know, all the other ones have relatively smooth lines. This one goes back up and is weird. If they only have five year smoothing, that's way before twenty thirty four. So why does it get squirrely out there?
Okay, they have, they have five year smoothing. And then each year, when plan experience, both for investments and for your demographic experience is different than what's expected. There becomes, there gets created a new layer of unfunded liability. That new layer of unfunded liability gets amortized over a twenty year period. Moving forward, so there are basically layers, new layers of twenty years. Some of the layers are expiring over the next few years and get paid off. Some new layers of bad experience then kick in and make it go back up later.
Can you explain what you mean by the demographic?
So demographic, the demographic assumptions that part of what Cessara does, their actuary does, in order to come out, what they're trying to do is make sure that there's enough money in the pension plan. They all the benefits you promised for the rest of everybody's career and their lives. So they make assumptions as to demographic assumptions like retirement, when people are expected to leave and start collecting benefits. Life expectancy, how long they're going to live and collect those benefits. Disability rates, any, how many of your firefighters might get hurt in the line of duty and start collecting benefits early? Turnover, which firefighters might work here a little while and leave and not collect benefits. There's also on that side.
Demographics are probably not affected by what happens in the stock and bond market.
No, no, this, this is
So I don't understand the difference.
This
The red line, the
Well, okay, again.
Based on demographics.
So no, the difference between the red and the the red, the blue line is not demographics at all. Difference between the red and the blue line is just that one year investment return. What's the, what's happening with the blue line? Is that you reach a hundred percent funded in twenty twenty seven? And once you hit a hundred percent funded, one of the changes in two thousand twelve, Governor Brown passed Pepper, the Public Employee Pension Reform Act. It did a lot of different things. It created a new benefit tier so that new employees all get the same benefit. The firefighters here get the same benefits as firefighters, every other district all across the state, which wasn't true before. Employees are paying half of normal costs to to pay for it. One of the other things it did is it said that once you get above a hundred percent funded, you still continue to pay your normal cost. Normal cost is the actuarial term for the cost of each year of service assets earned. Your total contribution is a combination of normal cost and a payment for the unfunded liability. So when there's a positive unfunded liability, when you're behind target, you're paying extra to catch up. When you get ahead of target, what happened in the past, and that happened in the late nineteen nineties, when Cessara, along with most of the big public pension plans in California, were more than a hundred percent funded, is the contribution weights went down. They probably went down to zero here in Contra Costa County, if I remember correctly. And so when the markets were going well, you weren't required to make a contribution. And when you had a lot of money, you weren't required to make a contribution. Then markets went down, benefits actually got increased at that point. But benefits got increased, markets went down. You were then asked to make bigger contributions just when a recession hit and you had less money. So one of the reforms that Governor Brown put in was to say that when you hit, get above a hundred percent funded, rather than letting your contribution drop down to zero, you continue to pay the normal cost each year. You get above a hundred percent funded. And it gives you protection for when the markets inevitably drop down. So that's why the blue line levels off because you hit a hundred percent funded sooner. That's why the blue and the and the orange line come together when you hit a hundred percent funded for both of them under both scenarios. But the ups and the downs are due to things that happened in past years that got wiped out because of, you know, would have been good returns. A good question.
So those accelerated payments, your, the orange line because of the loss will go on for till nine, two thousand thirty?
Twenty twenty.
Thirty two.
But hey, you're going to continue to go up for the next five years as this, the 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 loss from this year gets smoothed out over that five year period. And the thing is the, it's based on the valuation, the valuation as of December thirty first of each year determines the contribution that gets paid the next, a year later fiscal, for the fiscal year. So there's a bit, a little bit of a time lag, and that's why
That's doubling what they had before.
The contributions you're being asked for are basically because the unfunded liability increasing, contributions are basically doubling over the next five years. Absolutely. And we are seeing that in a lot of agencies all across California and all across the country. One really bad investment year is going to cause your contribution rates to rise significantly. This is unfortunately what happens during volatile markets. It's also when we get to the discussion of why do you have a section one fifteen pension trust? And what are you going to do with it? This may be one of the things that you, some of the agencies that we work with, you are using their section one fifteen pension trust, the money they're setting aside with the goal of cutting off part of that peak. Putting some extra money in now so that they could, instead of paying nine million in two thousand thirty, they're trying to pay a little bit more than what they are required now and use that money to cut it down to maybe seven and a half million, still an uncomfortable amount, but, you know, trying not to have the, to use any budget surplus you may have in the current years to protect you against what's happening up in the future.
The the other thing I've noticed that Cessara doesn't do is they assume, for example, of the last couple of years, they've been assuming, I think, to be honest here, a three and a half percent wage increase when we've been paying five percent wage increases. So they're underestimating the pension liability when they do that.
Right, the salary increases probably through, you know, two thousand through about two thousand seventeen. Is assuming three and a half percent increase probably reasonable? Last few years, last year, a couple of years, that salary increases have been much higher across the board than the assumptions that are there. We are, or again, we're waiting to see what results come out from Sarah. We're having a similar discussion with the the CalPERS, all of the CalPERS agencies, their valuation reports are going to get released in about three weeks. And we're going to be looking at those to see what the across the board increases have been across the state for those agencies.
But are they actually, this, am I wrong, Chief and Lori Ann, that we have been paying bigger salary increases than Cessara has been having in their models to determine our normal rates? So doesn't take very many percent doing that, you know, you have, you're off by a percent and a half for three years or four years. And it keeps growing, you know, it adds a pretty big base and that base just stays there and grows forever.
Right. That's that's another thing that's adding to the unfunded liability each year. And I expect when they have the twenty twenty the twenty twenty two and twenty twenty three valuation reports, there will be losses due to salary increases, probably bigger than they have been even recently.
So so that's the question. How do they, do they eventually put in actuals?
Well, each, yeah, each year when they do the valuation, they take the, the actual evaluation, they take the data, the actual data that you have for that year. And so they correct and the difference between what they, what they assumed they were going to have, the three and a half percent increase and what you may have actually given, let's call it five. That becomes a loss in that year, becomes a new unfunded liability base, and that new base gets advertised over a twenty year period. So eventually it gets paid for. They they do their best, they they make the best guess they can. I, the only thing I can guarantee is their guess is wrong. Sometimes their guess is goes in your favor. Sometimes their guess goes against you. But they're never going to actually get it right. And the thing is, being right in one year, they're trying to be right over a thirty, forty year period. And that's, that's what their goal is. And that's a difficult thing to do when the world is changed.
So one of the things you before, long before I was here, you know, back in two thousand and four ish, again, I went here. We fully funded our pension. We borrowed money. We said, okay, now our fund, our pension is fully funded. And since then, we have lost, I don't have the number up there on the sliding room, but it's thirty million dollars, right? So they've underperformed in the last twenty years by, at one point it was more like sixty million dollars, it's gotten a little better.
The the thirty million The, the thirty million, and I, I, I haven't gone back and checked recently, but my guess is of the thirty million, uh, probably. About half of it is due to investments being less than target.
Right.
Probably the other, most of the other half of it is due to them lowering the assumed rate of return for future years. Because they assume that, you know, they were at one point at eight, maybe eight and a quarter. And as they drop it down from eight and a quarter to eight, seven and a half to seven, and then down, I think they're at six point seven five now. As they drop it down, less money is expected, future investment return. That means they need more money in now to hit their target. That raises your liabilities, that raises the unfunded life, that raises your unfunded liability. So, uh, if, and again, I haven't looked at it recently, but you have roughly about half of it's going to be due to investment losses. About half of it's going to be due to assumption changes. Mostly the change in the discount rate, also extending life expectancies. Uh, but. Those combinations usually get us pretty close to what the, the unfunded liabilities, yes.
You use the phrase, the world is changing, what did you mean by that?
Uh, the world is changing, the world, the. When I first started doing this in the, in the eighties, in the nineties. Um, demographic experience relatively consistent from year to year. Um, the markets were a lot more consistent than they are right now. Um, so the ability, the, you know, the ability to project forward. Did, we didn't have nearly the ups and downs. And some of the things that we're seeing, some of the challenges. That your team has in terms of trying to recruit and retain people. Uh, are not issues that they had to deal with, the, the things, the approaches that they had that worked well ten years ago. Are not necessarily the same things that are going to work right now. Um, you have extra challenges as a fire district. You know, when, when we talk to, you know, if you look at the companies, the private sector having trouble hiring people. They've got a variety of different things they can do. Um, they're, you know, in terms of, you know, helping, helping morale, they can let people work from home. You can't have your firefighter working from home. Uh, they can't just zoom in to a fire and give some, send somebody a YouTube video and say, fix the fire yourself. Um, not going to work, they need to show up in the office, they need to be there, need to be there for hours that most of us would consider completely unreasonable. Um, and that's part of the job. And finding the right people to do that job is a lot more difficult now than it was pre pandemic. Than it was ten, fifteen years. Uh, so that becomes a challenge, you were, earlier today, you were talking about the number of unfilled positions. And how hard it is to find the right people. Uh, some of what you have to do now to fill that, this isn't supposed to be a discussion of, of compensation and labor. But part of what needs to do is, is unfortunately raising pay rates to keep fun, get to a point where you've got it. And you also want to make sure you still love the right people. And then when you've got the right people and you train them, you don't lose them. To, you know, having them say, oh, we were trained here. Uh, now we're going to go work for Walla Creek Concord Oak. Um, so. Those are some of the challenges that go through this and throw in a worldwide pandemic on top of it. Um, it, it becomes difficult to try and, and deal with all that.
So that's another form of demographic change going on. We're looking at a demographic bubble where all over the world, including in our district. It's an aging population. So you've got fewer workers contributing to the pension. Uh, and a greater number of people who are collecting a pension for longer, uh, at higher rates. In addition to that, I mean, I'll just, I know that this is a controversial subject in some venues, but I try to read the science. And the American Geophysical Union publishes a whole lot of very interesting things about how the world is changing. And we look at ninety degrees or sea surface temperatures off Florida. And consistent one hundred and nineteen degree temperatures making Phoenix maybe uninhabitable. That's having an effect on the portfolios, it's having the effect upon the bonds. That insurance and reinsurance companies hold, it's on the equities of insurance, reinsurance companies. And I know it's controversial, the whole E S T thing is controversial. But I think from a responsible perspective, what's happening in those kind of changes in this world is what. Responsible investors ought to be taken into consideration as well. I, I don't know whether Cesara does that or not.
I, I'm, I'm confident that Sarah takes it into account. Um, I have not, I've not looked at their, uh, their investment guidelines in, uh, in a while.
But, but we can't fix the Sarah, you know, but.
But, but the Sarah board is responsible for doing that. And while you can offer suggestions to them.
I understand.
They're gonna, they're gonna do what they're gonna do.
I understand, I understand, but it is something that we need to be aware of and factor in.
And, and right.
All kinds of decisions that we make.
When you get to, when we get to the discussion, if I can get a few more slides down.
Yep.
Um, sometime before my five AM flight, uh, leaves.
All right, I'll shut up.
And that's, that's not based on this discussion right now, every single one of the items so far. Uh, was very interesting and you all are doing your job to be, to. Be prepared for each of these and have something to say, and that's great. Uh, I still have a five AM flight, so.
I get you.
Um, go ahead. So, but when we start talking about the one fifteen trust. And whether you want to use that one fifteen trust rather than paying extra money to Sarah. Part of this discussion of you want to have control of the investments, you don't necessarily know what they're doing or trust what they're doing. This gives you an opportunity to, to, to do that. It also puts responsibility on you when you're doing that. Or your staff to make decisions as to how that money's being invested. So the balancing off of, yeah, yeah, I don't like what they're doing, but we don't know what we're doing either. So how do we deal with it? It's that part of the question. Um, next slide. So we'll talk about the impact, how these things change based on the one fifteen trust. And basically the one fifteen trust is extra money you've set aside. That is irrevocably set aside to be used to pay for pension benefits. That money can only be used to take from there, go to Cesara to pay pension benefit. Now you can use it to pay for either you're part of your regular contributions or to make additional contributions to Cesara over time. That's at your discretion. When you use it and how you use it, you have control. But part, because Cesara doesn't have the money right now, it does not impact your contribution rate. All it impacts is your funding position.
So one of the challenges with pre-funding Cesara, which we already did. Is that because they earn less than their expectations and they earn less than we earn, uh, it's not a good investment to give them extra money.
That is definitely something you should take into account when deciding what to do.
They charge a one percent overhead for one thing. So you just chop one percent off the top of everything all the time. And we don't have that in our portfolio.
Okay, so let's take a look at the next slide. So the, again, market value of assets in your one fifteen trust as of June thirty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, you just heard. It's moved up to ten million dollars. Uh, we didn't know that since that was a number that you just found out today. Um. So what we have assumed was that there, there, the, your investment portfolio is supposed to earn five percent per year. The way it's invested in the one fifteen trust. So we assumed it was going to hit that five percent target moving forward from each of those points in time and moving forward in the future. And what that means, next slide to the balance. Is that, again, we're expecting it to get up to about seven million. Uh, June thirty, two thousand twenty three, you put in extra money, the market shot up, you're up to ten, so you're ahead of these, these, these blue bars. We, we did not make any assumptions as to future money coming in, because that's the discussion of policy. We just looked at that, assumed it was growing by five percent per year. And by growing by five percent per year, it was projected basically you go from seven and a half million to double. Uh, in about fifteen years up to two thousand thirty nine, so seven and a half was supposed to go, it's going up to about fifteen. Uh, now that you have ten, it'll probably go up to twenty, again, assuming it hits five percent per year and you don't make additional contributions. What that does to your funded percentage, along with the contributions going into Cesara, shows up in the next slide. Where the funded percentage, the, without the one fifteen trust is the orange line, with the one fifteen trust is the gray line. So by using the money in the one fifteen trust. And just letting it grow from here, you're going to cut about seven years off of the amount of time it takes to get to a hundred percent funded. So at that point, if you want to get to a hundred percent funded right away, you can take all the money in the one fifteen trust. And give it to Cesara, which does not respond to the question of them, you know, then taking that money and. Potentially not doing well with it and creating new unfunded life. Because as you are very much aware. Getting rid of your unfunded liability doesn't mean you'll never have unfunded liability. Yeah, it's not like paying off the, the loan on your car.
Yeah.
Or the mortgage on your house. Uh, basically this is where they think the target is, you got to that target at some point in time. Um. Somebody didn't pay the bills and something goes wrong. So.
Is my microphone still working?
It does, yeah. And it's just, and yes, much better, you, now you can close your eyes and sleep during my presentation, which is way usually.
And nobody will know.
There we go. Uh, so this, this, I guess, can, can help start the discussion of. You know, you have thirty five million in unfunded liability. If you just keep doing what you're doing and Cesara keeps doing what it's doing. You are expected to continue to have thirty five million in unfunded liability for the next five to, to. Five or so years before it'll start getting paid off. And the way it gets paid off is having your contribution jump up to about nine million dollars a year. Um, which probably, I know. Is growing faster than you expect your revenues to grow during that time period. So the question becomes. What do you, what actions do you want to take? How do you want to? You know, the, you know, usually when we have, when I have discussions with, with boards and city councils, with board supervisors. We focus on the issues related to con, extra contributions coming in. Um, there are technically other ways you can, you know, you can. Not give big salary increases, problem with that. Is you're going to have trouble recruiting and not getting your main job done. Your main focus is running a fire district. And you need to have full employment. You need to have good people doing that, and to do that, you need to make sure you're paying people at certain levels. So liability side, for the purpose of this discussion, I'm going to assume is where it is. And it's a question of getting there. Wait, basically question of, do you pay the money now or do you pay it later? You know, the contribution spiking up to nine million is paying it in a few years. Do you have extra money you can set aside? If you have that money, where does it go? I get the impression some of you think it should not go to Cesara. Um, if you put it into the one fifteen trust. Then part of the, also this, this, the next level of discussion is how often you're putting money in. And, you know, right now, the money is being invested relatively conservative. To get a five percent return each year expected.
Why do we assume five percent?
Uh, I think that's based on the, 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 where you have your money invested, um, right now and how it's invested. Uh, you're in ours.
I, I thought we assumed six.
Right, so right, the latest long-term return is about six, right? Because we're almost a hundred percent equities, we have a unique, you know, directed policy for that. Right, so five's probably a little low.
Five's a little low, okay, so.
I, I think our, you know, we, we. We had historically assumed that if we were going to earn, or the Cesara was going to earn six and a quarter and they were assuming they were earning. Now it's six and three quarters, it used to be seven and a quarter, seven and a half, until further reason. Um, but I think we had assumed that ours is. Uh, earning this, the six and a quarter.
Yeah, we were not in bonds because of what we, what happened to the bonds. So that's why we went all.
Right, in, in the, in the short term, not being in bonds was a great place to be.
Right.
Um, once, and, and, and while, um, I'm not an investment advisor. Uh, I do a terrible job of doing my own investing, uh, when I try and make decisions, but. On the bond side, at least for the last year or so, the Fed has made very clear that they were raising interest rates. Uh, they said they were continuing raising interest rates, and I believe them. Uh, while they do that, as you mentioned before, bond values dropped dramatically as the interest rates rose. So getting out of bonds for that time period absolutely makes sense. Once the Fed is done raising interest rates. I think it makes sense for you to at least have a discussion one more time as to whether it makes sense to bring some of your money back to bonds. Um, to at least limit volatility moving forward.
That, that assumes you're worried about volatility because you think you need the money quickly. And if you don't think you need the money quickly, for the last hundred years, the stock market has outperformed the bond market. Uh, it, it, that's just a fact, and it always will, because it's a different risk profile, but.
Right, and if, if, if you are confident that you don't need the money for a short time period, on the other hand, if you're planning on using the money. To cut off a, a investment peak that's going to be happening in five years. Then you don't, then you want to make sure that you have some concern about volatility over the next few years. Before you let the money run wild and start to, you know, again, hopefully earn a better return. So part of this gets the question of, what do you want to do? What's most important to you? Is it, is it getting to, is it getting to a hundred percent funded? Is it trying to level out your total pension contributions over time? Part of what I think you're doing right now in terms of putting additional money into one fifteen trust. Is instead of assuming the six point seven five percent return that Cesara assumes. You're rerunning the numbers at a slightly lower interest rate, taking that difference and putting it in, basically assuming that they're lying to you. And they're really going to earn six and a quarter, you're putting the money in, or they're, they're lying to themselves.
And well, that's, that's a better way to think of it, but they also make one percent out that, you know, the rest of the market doesn't take down.
The other thing, I don't, historically, I mean, we gave Sarah, or prepaid, in a sense, twenty six million dollars. Several years ago on the assumption that we were paying off the unfunded pension liability well. Fast forward. It was, was supposed supposedly zero at that point, but then it shot back up to sixty million. So it was the volatility and, and the inability to know what they were going to do.
And so, but, but we basically assumed that that's going to go on forever, that they, they systematically undercharge their normal cost.
And, and from that perspective, yeah, do, doing what you're doing, and, and I've worked with a number of cities that have a similar approach. They are actually, that is one of the, the key things that they can do with our software is plug in a lower assumed grade of return. Get what the cost would be using Cesara's methods and assumptions otherwise. Based on that and take that extra money and set it aside, you know, in a one fifteen trust. So that you're putting money aside to basically protect you, basically paying a little bit more now so you can pay a little bit less later. At some point, if you're going to continue to follow that model. Uh, you should use that money to, when, you know, while your required contribution is below. Uh, it's actually is above what Cesara's asking for, you. Put the extra money into one fifteen trust. When it gets to a point where the amount is above, that where Cesara's asking you for is above what you're, you've got going on there. Then you should take some of the money from one fifteen trust and use it to pay some of the required contribution from Cesara.
So the one fifteen trust functions as a smoothing mechanism.
It function, it can function as the smoothing methods, if you want to use it for that, if, if it really comes down to. You don't trust their investments and you don't like the fact that they're charging the higher, the higher, you know, administrative rate. Uh, then just keep money, putting money into the, the one fifteen trust, but the thing is. If you're never going to give the money to Sarah, it doesn't function as a rainy day.
Well, but, you know, never is it.
Never is a long.
The, the problem is, th- this wouldn't say we're going to give any money for the next ten or eight years. Um, it wouldn't be, you know, we wouldn't be fully funded until at least that long. And so the question is much like the state says, you know, we charge the, the normal cost all the time. And if there's, if you have a surplus, you, you know, just kind of keep, you still make your payments even though they don't need it necessarily. So that, I guess that would be the way I would look at, and, and the way the thing was designed, we had a very long board meeting at the Maraga Library. In fact, we set this whole thing up. And the answer was, we're going to amortize those, you know, whatever the gap is today over seventeen years, that was the. Back when we set this whole thing up. And the answer was, we're going to amortize those, you know, whatever the gap is today over seventeen years. That was the number we came up with and said. That we're going to keep funding, but that assumed it was, it was kind of a one time thing, except it's not a one time thing. It occurs every single year. And the only good news is. You know, sooner or later, the earnings you have on your portfolio actually make up that gap itself, instead of having to fund it every year with money out of our budget. Um, so, but we're nowhere near that yet. So it's not obvious to me why we need to have a different plan today until we get. Somewhere near being fully funded.
Right. And the. For those agencies that are trying to protect themselves against, you know, more market, market volatility. Potentially, you know, during, you know, the time when your revenues are, are needed someplace else. Um, what we're seeing is them having, setting aside, uh. Something like, uh, two years of contributions. To be able to sort of use that as a cushion for basically a rainy day to be able to use.
Our, our, isn't it also true? I mean, that one of the arguments for putting in, I'm not, I've got no policy view on this at all, but. One of the arguments is the smoothing announced borrowing.
Absolutely. Oh, well, when, when the markets are going down.
When they're going.
Yeah, I'm sorry, is, is like borrowing. And to some extent, in fact, unfunded liability i- i- by itself. Effectively. So Sarah is loaning you the thirty five million in unfunded liability, and they're charging you six point seven five percent interest. So this is a debt. And it's an expensive debt, probably compared to the other debts that you have right now.
Yeah, we went through this discussion in two thousand and four. And the answer was, hey, let's just borrow the money at five percent and pay it off. And that was great. And then they kept. Misinvesting all of that nice money that we gave them, and that's why we are, once again, thirty plus million dollars in debt. So our answer was, we'll do it ourselves. Thanks for sharing.
Which, you know, and I've seen a lot of those. I, I have also seen that. Um, I've seen situations where that has gone wrong for certain agents, um. Working with, uh, the city of Tucson. Uh, they basically borrowed a very low interest rate, put the money in a one fifteen trust. Uh, basically, beginning of, uh, two thousand twenty-two and watched the markets, uh, just plummet. Um, just really bad time.
But we're just not borrowing the money.
Right. So. Um, I, I guess, quite so. Sounds like you are generally happy with your approach right now to funding the one fifteen trust.
Right. Yeah, I think the only question is what happens like when we have that spike in two year, three years. Uh, I, I, I don't know. That's just scary. Yeah, it's somewhat scary, but at the same time, if twenty twenty-three, it continues the way it's been in the rest of the market.
It'll undo some of that.
It's going to undo a bunch of that.
Yeah, that's true. Some, some of it.
We won't know that for over a year.
To, to beat the, they missed the target by about seventeen percent. If they beat, they, they're going to need to have about a twenty-four percent.
Well, I don't know to all of it, but all they'd have to do is earn a, earn ten percent, and at least they'd be a little bit above the.
A little bit, and, and part of what, yeah, again, if you continue to assume fifty basis points less than they are. Put the excess into your one fifteen drive. Keep having that money grow.
Legs go off the microphone. There's not a hint, you really don't worry.
You project pretty well, you can keep going. I, I mean, I, I assume this was for people who are falling asleep on Zoom at this point.
Yeah, there are.
It's for the best. It's, it's for the audio recording.
Now, I, uh, I coached soccer for fifteen years. My voice can project. So, uh, yeah, the question's going to be, the, the big question is. What, you know, under what circumstances would you use it? Yeah, when you have, you have a revenue need for something else, you can't take the money from this and use it directly for that revenue need, but you can take the money from this trust. Pay your pension contribution for that year and take the money you would have made for pension contributions and use it for another source. That is, that is somehow how you can project, you can protect you against some capital needs that you may have. This becomes a rainy day fund with limits because of the amount that is need to be contributed at any point in time. Now, and so by continuing to do this, you are able to set the money aside. You're able to put it someplace where it can be invested and get a return that's stronger than what you would get from your internal reserves. Uh, and while the amount on the internal reserves is growing, the returns as the Fed raises the interest rates, you still should expect to get more money from your one fifteen trust. Than you do from your internal reserves over the long term. Bad years goes down, not going to happen. Other than that, over the long term, you should be okay.
Yep.
Um.
Good.
I'm not, you know, so this, I don't, I, this is definitely have an app, I, you know, I guess the, the one thing that. Uh, I was hoping to get as direction, because this, this is basically a report telling you where things are. Just trying to make sure that with all the positive things you're doing, there's something to depress you, uh, from tonight's meeting. But, uh, on top of that, to get some general direction as to, uh, moving forward to, to. Basically, uh, looking to see if there are any adjustments that need to be made with your one fifteen trust policy. Both in terms of the contributions you're putting in. Your guidance as to how it might be used, and based on how you might use it and when you might use it. Start to direct the question of, does it make sense to stay in stocks because it's a long term investment? Or move some of it as the interest rates get higher towards bonds, because you think you may be using it in the next three to five years, and with a shorter time horizon. Volatility becomes more of an issue.
Well, if you think you can outsmart the other investors, it's generally a good idea to anticipate when interest rates top out. And then at least slightly increase your exposure to the bond market, because as the interest rates. Decrease as they might during the anticipation of recession, those bonds might for a short period of time off.
Right. So the, the, yeah, part of the question becomes when, and, yeah, at some point, Sue, the, the Fed sounds like they are. Coming to the end of their interest rates. Um, so. Uh, but, you know, each time they think they've crushed the economy, uh, the economy just seems to keep moving on. So we'll have to see what happens, but along, as long as inflation keeps coming down, it was down to three percent. Uh, last month on a year to year basis, they can get it down closer to, uh, the Fed's excuse for continuing to raise interest rates is mostly going to go away.
So I think our philosophy initially was to do the math, use. The six and three quarters for Sarah, use the six and a quarter for us. Uh, advertise the, you know, that may give you a gap in what you're, what the input is. So we don't agree with their unfunded liability. We think it's higher than that.
Yes.
Because we use different discount rates and different earnings rates than they do. And, and so as long as there's a gap, there's going to be. Forget about our earnings for a minute. There's going to be an unfunded liability. If we didn't have a fund, there'd be an unfunded liability forever, basically, in our.
On larger.
Right. But we, we are putting money, so we're supposed to put aside whatever the, the, the difference is, what we've been doing. Only in the last couple of years, because we sort of cheated for the first few years. We didn't put as much in as we, as that policy would have stated. Um. So was to put away that amount of money every year. And the good news is, we now have a bit of a portfolio that will be having earnings and help. Reduce that gap, which, which are a long range financial progression. Um, but I don't see any reason for it to change that.
So.
That methodology right now.
Okay, so. Until something. Happens that causes you to need to want to use it.
Right.
Um, sounds like you, what you would like to do is get to a place where the amount in the one fifteen trust. Is the difference between the unfunded liability at Cessar's rate. And the unfunded liability at your rate.
Yes.
And when you get to that amount, you're going to say, for now, we've got enough.
Yep.
Okay.
Does, does Gov Invest do modeling?
Absolutely.
I mean, so, I mean, if we want to. Give Gloria some other direction about. And investing some of the, the trust money, I mean, paying it, we could do that.
All of that, and right. She's got capability of doing it through the software. She also has capability of just sending us an email and having our team do it, because that's part of the subscription. Uh, and bouncing it off of us as we go through it, just because. You know, you want to, you want to be sure you haven't plugged the wrong number in and something go, oh, we're, we're a hundred million dollars off. I think this is good.
The reason we got it in the first place was so that we, on our long range financial forecast, so we, instead of just doing budget year by year, you know, we said, hey, we. We kind of need to know what the long term picture is, and we don't. Believe in what Sarah was giving us necessarily, and it's super volatile sometimes. So we use this as a. As a, as a forecasting tool to tell us how big that issue was going to be. Could be, um, and, and so we've been using it, I think, very successfully, because, you know, we've been putting in, because it allows you to put in different. Rates of pay, I mean, in advance, you know, if we have a three year contract, they don't. They, they look at it year by year, even though you already signed a three year contract. We can now put in the whole three years or whatever.
Yeah, we put that in when we figure out how much we're putting into that one fifteen trust.
We've, we've been doing that every year, using their software to feed that line item, or there's, there's a whole bunch of line items that shows up in, but to feed that. Part of our income saving balance sheet, we've been using that software, and with those varying assumptions.
Yeah. And we probably come out. Yeah.
Well, and because they, they also do the, you know, they figure out, they effectively mimic. The liability side of what Cessar has also, because they. The, uh, the deep, I don't know where you guys got all the detail, because when we asked for it, and there were precious people. Didn't work very well.
Well, again, we, we, we work with retirement systems with, with pension funds all across the country. There is. Um, yeah, and there's a lot of information in their actual evaluation report. That, uh, makes a lot more sense when you've been an actuary for forty years. So.
Just a question. Comparing Sarah's. Other pension funds, are they comparable in their assumptions? And how they drive their decisions?
Uh, pretty much.
Are they?
Yeah, they're not, they're not like way up, way out of whack. They are, they are in line. I think they're a little bit, they're, yeah, they're, they're pretty much in line with where. The big public pension systems are throughout California and through most of the country. There are certain states where. The, uh, I think the actuary tends to be overly optimistic on the returns, so I tend to try and not include those in my discussions because.
Hmm.
They're willing to still assume they're going to hit eight, eight and a half percent. Um, even though they're not even close to getting that right now, because it keeps costs down over the short term and.
Does the Alameda County Employees Retirement Association use that?
Not yet.
Why not?
Uh, I'm not the right person to ask.
The question is, do they want to be able to have different assumptions than Sarah uses to be able to forecast, but their expenses are going to be. Some, some agencies want to do that, some don't. Thank you. This has been. Very, you are obviously very knowledgeable about how all this stuff works. Thank you.
I have so much useless information on pensions in my head right now, but. Anyway.
Well, you get some sleep tonight and have a good life.
Yes, yeah, thank you so much. It was very interesting.
And let me see your comedy routines.
Would you like to open public comment?
Sorry. If we have that public comment.
Oh. We have one hand raised. Jonathan Goodwin.
Hey there, um, at least somebody's still awake on Zoom. Uh, even though, by the way, we're not getting any pictures of the speakers, only of the agenda. Um, so anyway, um, I had two. Questions and, uh, comment for the, uh, two questions for the speaker, comments of the board. Uh, first question. Years ago, so Sarah deep pooled. Uh. MOFD from their pool, uh, and, uh. As punishment for following their own rules. And, um, just wondering, I'd never heard, was it repooled? Uh. No.
When, when, when you're saying deep pool, the, the investments. For all of this are being tracked separately, but the money for all of the agencies that are within Cessar all get invested the same way. But, uh, the MOFD has their, uh, Cessar tracks. The, the experience with an MOFD by itself, the benefits being paid, the salary increases each year. And keeps track of the amount of money you contributed. So it's basically treating it like a separate valuation, although the assets are still being invested the same way.
Does that mean anything? Is that, does that affect anything?
Um, well, I mean, in terms of having your own experience. Uh, it means you are paying for your own benefits. You're not necessarily paying anything extra for. Uh, you know, people who are working for the county or for other districts within this.
That working to the district's advantage or disadvantage?
Uh, that I don't know.
Okay, um. So I, uh, had another question, but I'll, I'll just let that go. I, I wanted to say to the board. You guys are really deeply into this in a way that, you know. So we compare it to. Zillions of previous conversations, I mean, over the, the years and years where. There was very little, very shallow understanding, because it was so. Difficult to, you know, wade through and on and on and on. And in ten years' time. There'll be a brand new board, and they won't understand two percent of what you guys just went through. And I think you should really take this seriously as a responsibility to. Memorialize, that's not too heavy a word, but memorialize the understandings that you have, and it has something that the whole board can. Agree on and vote on, like have a committee do it. I mean, it sounds like make work, but I. I think it would be a tremendous service to. Keep the, the knowledge that you guys have and not let it just slide out under the door. Uh, when you leave, as will undoubtedly happen. I hope you take that seriously. Thank you.
Well, the legal is changing. He knows what it's going to be like.
Like, I, I think he's basically suggesting that none of you ever get to leave the board.
Yeah, that's perfect.
That concludes our public comment.
Okay, thank you. Um. Any. Was there an expectation of emotion?
No, no.
Okay.
Just for education.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes. Now, next, next item, which we sort of talked about already with players, was the development of a pension funding policy. Um, and just, yeah, trying to get guidance from you as to what you want to do. I think we got through most of that discussion.
Um, we, we had, there, there was one that was developed the day we approved this.
Yeah.
So, okay, so what, what was it, it concluded in the staff report, when it was approved, it was, uh, let's see, it's attachment. It was resolution seventeen dash zero five. And so that is different than, it, that's not a pension funding policy per se, and as compared to those samples and what is recommended. Is it like, it doesn't go into what Ira was saying, it doesn't go into when those funds would be used. You know, what the target goals are and some of the other things. It's not that broad. All, only thing it states is that. The district desires to set aside funds for the purposes of pre-funding Cessar pension obligations.
Well, if you go back and read the minutes, which I'm sure we keep. Uh, it, there was a very long discussion and lots of board votes and a lot more information than in, was in that short paragraph you just stated about what the velocity was. Lots of back and forth among the board members. It was a three to two vote. Uh, and that was what the decision was, was to amortize things over seventeen years. And to fund the amount that was the difference between, uh, our calculation and Sarah's calculation. And we didn't have any discussion about when to use it, because that's going to be those time and circumstance that I think is very difficult to develop a policy for.
So, right, so it's up to the board, if you want a, for, if you want a pension funding policy, that would, would be the direction that, um, you could give right now.
We have the policy to fund it. We know what that is, and that's what we've been doing. The only question would be how we might want to spend.
Right, or, or also the question of, at what point, you know, and, and this was one of the questions I, I, I asked you earlier. At what point do you think you have enough money in there that you can stop putting money?
No.
Yeah, well, it sounded like when you're, when the, the amount there is equal to the diff- difference between.
Exactly. Year amortization thing.
Right, should work that way. Now, is it, when you said. Right. Should work that way. Now, is it, when you said seventeen years and this was done, I assume this was two thousand seventeen, sixteen, seventeen, something.
January seventeenth, January eighteen point seven.
Okay. Um, was it, so did in two thousand seventeen, you said seventeen years, that gets you to two thousand thirty-four. Okay. Do, do we just assume it's seventeen new years each time, or do we try and get it to where by two thousand thirty-four, you have the right amount of money? Is it decreasing by one year each time?
I, I, I think the intent was at the point in time when the unfunded pension liability is fully funded, including or assuming our reserve. Then you can determine whether or not you want to use it for making pension contributions, but in, in a sense that it's a, a fixed reserve in terms of until and it, in our experience and looking forward, I don't see anything that that ever is going to change.
Other than the earnings on that portfolio, it's just big enough, right, might be as big as that gap.
Right. And so part, part of the question is, you know, have it setting the policy in the beginning and starting to set money aside. All great. You're moving in the right direction. You're doing a good job with this. Now that you've got a certain amount of money, um, and there may be something coming up in the horizon to use it. Setting, having the policy discussion, setting up a policy in where that, where you can vote on it to give guidance to your staff, so that they can let you know when some of these, these red flags are coming. So that you can decide, make the decision as to whether you should be using it, whether you should keep making contributions, whether it's more important than something else, you have to put, use the money.
We can do that if you're in a budget discussion.
That's right.
Yeah.
We are doing that. We, we have enriched the natural forecast, but your software, you know, informs us about, and that's what we have.
Yeah. A lot of agencies have set, have basically created a policy document to help the staff know what information to bring to you, what metrics to show you, to show you that you're on target, ahead of target, behind target. You're at a place where you can stop funding, understanding what those things are. That's part of what a funding policy would do. And understanding that, you know, be, being able to, to have, to have a discussion that, oh, your goals are to hit these targets, do these things. Top priority is to cover the gap with the, the different, the overstatement of the assumed rate of return. Second thing maybe to allow you to have some money under, you know, if something happens and you need to use some money someplace else to potentially have it here, if it's not coming through your regular, you know, income. Knowing that may also give your staff the ability to say, oh, this is a time when we may need to, we may want to rethink what's happening with investments. Bring it to your attention, make sure it doesn't slip by. Um, because sometimes problems don't happen just when you're doing your budgets. So.
But, you know, with five years smoothing and twenty-year other smoothing, um, you know, if, if you're right, it can be volatile year to year, but all that's moving is there for a reason.
I'm, I'm fine with not having the extra work and helping to write a policy, but again, if you want one, I think it is, is something that we were happy to, it's part of what we do to work with your staff to bring something in front of you that I think would uh, do a better job of memorializing what it is you're trying to do. So that, um, when, you know, if one of you ever wants to get off the board, uh, there's this institutional knowledge as to what's happening and guiding future board members with this knowledge.
Yeah, I was gonna say, just for me, um, a little bit more formalized. I've read the piece of paper, right, that's in our deck and I don't know what it says, but it doesn't say anything about amortizing over seventeen years or targets or anything like that. So I guess my question would be, is it, is it worth having that formalized just to pass on the institutional knowledge and our.
Memorializing the, the in, the, the funding aspect of it. I think the.
The funding and objective though, right? As I, I guess what I was thinking is we, we, an objective to get to zero, at least, right?
Not objective, but I think the, the facts and circumstances uh, about, you know, when this write the checks, I think is a much more, I think it's hard to write a philosophy or a policy about that, that's, that is separated from the, the fact and circumstances at the moment.
Oh, that is absolutely, any good policy is going to leave the discretion to you as to exactly how to do that. It's just going to talk in general terms about these are the types of things you want to use it for. Uh, which will help guide to some extent when there's the, the discussion of when there's enough money, when there's not enough money, how the money is being invested. Um, I think not necessarily driving it. This is not going to be prescriptive and say, you know, now we never have to ask you again. But again, it's gonna, it's gonna basically give you, you know, policies struggle.
If you, if you look at the next five years, we, I, I would say nothing should change in terms of what our current practices or the expectation of the use of those funds for other purposes. I mean, I, it, it's basically to fund the end, on the pension liability and as long as it's there. You know, it should stay there.
I think what Director Hassler is suggesting is, is, is more, um, simply writing down the, essentially the seventeen year.
Yeah, the funding.
Funding, yes, yeah, the funding, not spending, spending, I think spending should be clearly said, that's a facts and circumstances.
Right. Well, and this, but the. Investing aspect we do every year also, we have a whole discussion every year about what investing.
And, and we should have that in there, right? Every year, or as part of budgeting, we should do this, this, you know, this is the funding. I think that's pretty, I'm thinking simple. I'm not thinking a hundred page document.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I, I think the one pager, yeah, like what it is.
Yep. I'm happy to have that.
Okay, I agree.
All right. I've got some notes. We can start working on that and have it ready for the next meeting. Hopefully, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Is that enough for this one?
Yes.
No. This one too.
We do not have any hand raised. And we've not received written public comment. We'll go on to the next item.
Thanks very much. You did a great job.
Yeah, you did.
Okay.
Item nine point five is the fund balance policy. So the but district's fund balance policy is reviewed by the board on an annual basis. The policy states the district will maintain a minimum fund balance of unrestricted fund balance in the general fund of at least seventeen percent of budgeted general fund revenue at fiscal year end with a goal of achieving a fifty percent year-end general fund balance in the long term. Staff completed a risk analysis, which is included in the staff report. Staff also included the most recent information regarding reserves published by the Government Finance Officers Association. The board has recently discussed changing the fund balance policy minimum, which may be done during this agenda item. Staff request board direction regarding the fund balance policy.
Any comments from any of the board?
Why? Definitely think needed to change what the number is, but but so there, there are two different concepts here. One is on, you know.
I think the, the item relative to the policy on, I thought we put it into, um, next month. Regarding the poli-, the, the seventeen, the, the policy on the, the reserve, general fund reserve from seventeen to fifty. I think the comment that raised the issue was, I said, I thought we were going to discuss changing the, and raising the minimum.
Yes, that's what this agenda item is. And so, right, so if, if you want to raise the minimum, then the board needs to decide what you, what number you want it to be, and then you would adopt the new policy with that new minimum.
That's what this agenda.
That's what this agenda.
You brought this up several months ago. You made a long argument about why you invited those, I think it was forty or fifty, so.
So at the moment, are we including in our fund balance or, or, you know, are we including the, any of these other reserve funds that we have, like the ones, the ones we just discussed?
No, the fund balance policy is the, in the general fund only, and it's unrestricted fund balance. So the, the pension trust money is restricted fund balance, so it's not included in the calculation.
So I think this one also addresses change in the rules with regards to statement fifty-four. Adopting a, a policy regarding identification of reserves or the names of set monies that are set aside for restricted or unrestricted.
Yes, if you look at the attachment, let's see, it is attachment. Attachment A is the fund balance policy, and that includes the non-spendable and all of the Gatsby stuff that we have to have under Gatsby fifty-four, right?
The, the five, the five. A separate fund for each or, or a fund for grants in general, instead of mixing grants in with our general fund monies?
Yes, that was completed effective July one, twenty twenty-three.
Because our budget didn't do that.
Yes, it did. That's with, as part of the budget was a new fund was established, and it's that we have the fire risk reduction grant fund now. Because that's the only grant that's going on at this point. There's that fund and the tunnel East Bay Hills.
Pretty sure we're, you know.
Yeah, I've never seen. It's in the, uh, two thousand twenty-four budget.
Right. It's effective July one, twenty twenty-three. That change has been made.
Yeah.
So we don't include any revenues, even the twelve and a half percent overhead in our budget, because I'm pretty sure it's in the budget we just approved.
But it's right, it's in a separate fund. Um, so.
But are all the numbers all commingled?
No, I'm no, it's a separate fund. There is a fire risk reduction grant fund and a tunnel East Bay Hills fuel break fund.
For the balance sheet, what about the investing?
It's both. So that'll be going forward.
So when, when we approve the budget this year, you're saying we approve different budgets?
Yes, the, the, the budget is adopted by, on a fund basis. So we have our general fund, and so all of that, it's all in the one document, but it's by fund.
So I guess the real issue then is we want to change the policy with regards to the seventeen percent.
And what's our current? Oh, and, and.
It is seventeen.
So there's another question though, before we get all, all the way to that. So when do we measure that, that percentage?
At fiscal year end, so June thirty.
So it's not, because we had talked about it, explaining and having a forecast of what the minimum was throughout the year, not at one point, at, at the end point, because that's not the low point of the year. It's never the low point of the year. The low point of the year is on November, December. Um, so you know, to me, that's the, you know, the, the question is, are we ever going to be dipping into having these funds and those kinds of things? It's much more interesting to understand what the, what the true minimum is, not what the minimum at the end of an arbitrary accounting time is. So I think maybe it's a definitional question and it, we should clarify in addition, because what I don't want to do is say, he had forty, it's forty percent at the end of the year, and we got down to four on December twelfth.
Yeah.
Inevitable. Isn't the general fund sense, it's really the one that probably goes up and down the most likely, the most often. It's got to add some flexibility to it.
Yes, sir. Our revenue is very lumpy with the, the major infusion in that second week, typically the, the end of the second week of December. The day prior being the low point, the day after being the high point.
Because we got all the money once in a county.
So you can't, it's impractical to say we're going to have a fifty percent.
We, we have to have a date in this life.
Which is in the date we select, so the other one in fiscal year. So it's past.
And there's nothing that prevents us from using a different date, correct? Right. So that the board could provide direction to use a different date. Obviously, that would make.
You don't want to use the day before we get to that.
Well, that's exactly the day you do want. Because.
Well, then we're probably going to give it the seventeen percent.
Well, but we're all higher. So, no, the problem, our, our revenue is incredibly forecasted. So that's not a problem. And the expenses are relatively forecasted. So we don't have a revenue and forecast problem, you know, and expense problem. We, we roughly know what it is. The question is one thing, it's, it's forecastable unless there's some big economic change. So the question is, how much money do you save? Do you, you spend all but one month of your entire savings, your whole stock portfolio, your savings accounts? And so if you get fired, you can't make the second mortgage payment after the day you got fired, because you only have one month of savings. That's the boat we're trying to figure out. How much of a buffer do we want to have for unexpected things that are going to happen?
And, and what happens when we, just let's say, for instance, we passed whatever number it is, right? We, we set it for forty, let's say, just and, and on that day, we were at thirty. What, what happens? I mean, I don't know. We like out of policy or what?
Correct, sir. If we, if we have a policy to exceed a certain reserve and we do not exceed it, what happens is we would report that we've not exceeded, but there are no that's one hundred percent internal and there are no external. We also have precious few things that if one day that were to happen, that we could change the next day to alter our, our outflows.
We couldn't pull levers immediately to resolve the issue.
Well, we all just do, you're still going to.
But projection wise, we could.
Yeah, we could make, the board could, we would, i- i- if, say, we will, but typically that would occur either during the annual budget process or perhaps during the mid-year. Um, that say, here are the projections, and as Director Jorgens mentioned, our, our expenditures and inflows are very projectable, but things happen. Uh, COVID is an example. We saw some changes, uh, unexpected, et cetera. But that would typically be addressed as part of the annual budget process, and we, we don't have a, a great deal of discretionary funding. Uh, most of our, of our expenditures are, are programmed and required. Uh, the other thing I would, just as a reminder, is, is that, and it's certainly the board policy that we understand loud and clear not to utilize the Teter Plan, and we have not used the Teter Plan since twenty nineteen, when the North Carolina shaded fuel break expenditures caused, while we were waiting reimbursement. But i- if we actually dip below what funds we have on hand, assuming that it's within a range that is, is projected that we would meet with the inflow of property tax. Uh, we, we have access to the Teter Plan whereby we're able to borrow against the county treasury. Uh, and no interest. The last time that occurred is a good example of where there's a policy decision that we had time-sensitive state money to expend on a fuel break that can provide wildfire risk reduction in the current year. And do, and because of the lag in reimbursement, the state was going to write the check, they did write the check, it just takes a period of time. And that project was occurring right as we were approaching our low point. And, and so with board approval, uh, we spent through and didn't hold up the project in order to avoid accessing the Teter Plan. So the project got done. We carried, essentially ran a bill with the Teter Plan for a short period of time, and then as the state reimbursement flowed in, we got back where we would have been were it not for that unplanned expenditure and unplanned reimbursement. But the time we were done with the grant, there, there was revenue generated from it, but at the moment, because of the, the seasonality of our revenue, we were in that grid.
Does the Teter Plan involve costs penalties or interest? No.
Sure. You have to leave all your money, all of your money.
You have to liquidate your capital fund. You have to liquidate every cash fund you have. So it's taken all of your fund balances to zero. And so that's, that's the issue.
It's a last resort.
It's a last. The whole, the whole purpose and, and then again, it, it really is a, 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 a point in time in the year, and it's July or June thirtieth, the end of your fiscal year. If you don't have a fifty percent reserve balance to cover the next six months until you get your tax revenues in. And that's why it's fifty percent, because assuming it, you but in reality, it should be larger. If you're, the risks associated with these projects that we're doing, we have to have, we have a receivable, but we don't basically collect it. Maybe it's out sixty days. We have to have, we have a receivable, but we don't basically collect it. Maybe it's out sixty days. Six months, nine months, who knows? So that would argue for a higher than fifty percent, because those are monies that you're spending somebody else's. On somebody else's pocket, that you're going to have to fund it. Pay out the cash. And that would normally not. Be included in the fifty percent. That would argue for a higher percentage of sixty or seventy percent.
At that date, not at the.
December twelfth date would be much lower, because you are the day before.
But it, but it is a minimum fifty percent.
So what's the argument for not establishing a fifty percent reserve as of June? Why shouldn't we just do that?
That was, that was the point I made, I guess.
But the other data point.
I just clarify one point, though, that we have additional inflows of of revenue. Between June thirtieth and middle of December, so the years that we were not at fifty percent. Reserve on June thirtieth, which is most of the last several years, we have not accessed the data bank. We we've remained able to. To pay cash because of those other inflows between June thirtieth and the big inflow, but our primary investment is a. Director Jex is correct, are December and April is when our our largest inflows occur, but there are other.
If you look, if you look at the the biggest expenditure of the year. Is the month of July, because man. In the future, it's going to be, you know, nine million dollars, goes out in one month, plus another. Million dollars of normal operations.
Yes, sir, I was just pointing out that if 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 we're at forty nine percent on June thirtieth, that does not mean we're accessing Peter Plan. That said, there are, there are going to be increase in expenditures, most of which come due in July.
I mean, that's the reason for the focus on the collection or billing and collection and timeliness of that. Because if if it gets out to ninety days, you'll we'll run into probably even with fifty percent. So it's just the 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 point was, when I raised it. Seventeen percent is. I don't know why, I I assume they, that's what they had at the point in time when the, at the point when we were really in trouble.
I heard it was two months operating. I heard it, John, I heard it's two months operating. John, two months, it's two months operating is what the seventeen.
It's basically two months operating cash.
Yeah, 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 it's whatever.
But the other thing that happened, you know, it's in two thousand and eight or so. We ended up, we didn't fire anybody, we just didn't hire people and let the staff go down. Because we didn't have the money, because recession was so bad, you know, takes it, and there's always a lag. And when the actual recession happens, and when all the big bills come due to justice era and things, but we, you know, things got really bad, we cut people's salaries. We did all kinds of things, which were clearly not popular. With the community or with the fire crews. And so that's the reason, that's one way, because you need to have some kind of reserve.
Well, I haven't heard any arguments for not doing.
Yeah, I i- if you look at, I think I've raised it before, if you look at the city of Maraga. They had two incidences.
The bridge and the sinkhole.
What I'm saying is, I don't need to hear anymore. If there's nothing against it, let's just open it for public comment, okay? Right?
Yeah, just making sure, though, right, this is. Would the policy we're talking about be fifty percent is the. Go right now, seventeen percent is the policy and fifty percent is the goal.
In a sense, what you're saying, you could, you could survive with a seventeen percent, you can't survive.
Yeah.
We couldn't operate.
Yeah.
We couldn't take on the risks of.
But are we saying we're moving to fifty percent is the amount, or should we phase? I mean, is there any reason to phase it over time to raise ten percent each year, or should you raise it all at once? Well, it is a policy.
Which means you have to have a separate board meeting to not follow that policy, and you have to break the policy.
Well, if you, so a policy is is by definition not binding, but.
Why are we voting?
Well, because it's, you're saying this is your, 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 yeah, it's, it's, it's.
We make and.
It's your intent that it be fifty percent. It's different than than aspirational fifty percent. You're saying no. And 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 so you're you're suggesting that you're going to take actions, because I mean, only you can take those actions if if. If you're out of whack, right?
Say it is that. We restrict the spending if it gets below that and requires a board meeting.
Yes, sir, but to Council's point, that would be the decision of the board. There would nothing be automatic about it. So i- if the board were to say. That the policy of the Maraga and the Fire District is to retain at least a fifty percent fund balance as of a given date.
Yeah.
Then we would do an analysis and come back to present that we are not going to meet that with our current. Process, and then there could be board direction about whether or not we were, we would defer the implementation. Until the next budget process, or whether we would go and read, do, basically, the board would direct staff to revisit projects and programs. In order to achieve the savings that would be necessary. We don't have additional revenue options, obviously, so deceive the savings on the expenditure side.
It's what?
But the question is, what does it trigger if you're going to go, because you just mentioned a few things, the staff, so.
It would trigger staff coming back to you.
It would re- would require staff to come back preemptively, not after the fact, to say. You know, here's the situation, we think we're going to, because you know, this is going to be a big surprise. When something truly catastrophic happens immediately before it, it's most likely going to be, you know, there's. Could be covid, though.
Gloria, and aren't we on June? Thirtieth this year, about what, forty?
All right, so at June thirty, twenty twenty three, based on the most recent financial statements, then we are, we will exceed a fifty percent reserve. At June thirty, twenty twenty three. However, June thirty, twenty twenty four. We probably will drop underneath it, because the budgeted revenue increases, right? So you have to still and keep increasing your reserve. So potentially, June thirty, twenty twenty four, we would be less. I would have to go analyze it. I don't know. Uh, well, basically, in the published budget document, it's forty three point five percent.
Phase it in, phase it in, I think.
Just clarify to make sure we're on that, that the budget document we have adopted with now, understanding the midyear, there will be changes. There there always are, but the current bu- budget is adopted, projects a forty three point five percent reserve as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. So as an example of the discussion we are having, if the board's intent is to adopt. A a policy of a fund balance that exceeds forty three point five percent. Then then I would take that as direction to to bring it back, at which point the board could say. We'll wait to the midyear, we'll wait till next year, or bring us a a list, a laundry list of cuts, which is preceding my time, but I've read the minutes. Board is engaged in that, in that before, where the the direction was was made to provide. That to get the revenue, the measure to where it would be in. Six and a half percent is is not a insignificant number.
I mean, one possibility would be apropos of what Director Romo was suggesting, I think a little earlier, or maybe Director Jorgens as well. You could change the seventeen to forty, and then leave the fifty as the goal.
The thing that bothers me is you telegraph to the. I mean, to your readers of the financial statements and your policies. That it's okay at seventeen percent, we could survive, you can't. And you'd you'd have to really. That's two months revenue, I mean, two months. You're just going to survive, you'd spend it. I'd, that's fine.
And leave the fifty as the aspiration, so just 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 change seventy to forty, literally one.
Well, no, the the June thirtieth is forty. Because it's going to be.
We have one hand raised, Jonathan Goodwin.
Very briefly. You know, I I I've seen this sort of conversation come and go. Probably more times than you guys have, and fifty percent is really luxurious. Things just come up, and you know, you just have to spend the money, so I I I would just suggest that. You know, don't overthink it. You know, make, do what what you feel is comfortable, but understand that reality will entertain. Thank you.
Okay, so I moved it.
And that concludes our.
I'll move that we changed the number from seventeen to forty as of. Should be July first or June thirty?
Twenty twenty four.
Great.
My second.
Still with the goal of fifty percent. Okay. Have a.
With with, is a date in there?
June, June thirty is not, but not any particular year, yeah.
And it's currently going to be forty three. And we're often.
Will be over fifty percent this year.
That what was.
Last year.
Pre dates. Where you see you see significant movement, and there's. There are changes between now and then, such as strike team activity, et cetera.
Which we also have to sign, by the way.
Mid years, maybe February.
But but we also have to fund striking advances and things too.
Yes, assuming that they they go up.
I'm just saying, that's another variable that we hadn't talked about this.
So we had a motion, and we need to open public comment on the motion.
Any public comment on the motion?
Dan Albana.
Hi, good evening, board. I know it's, I'm sorry, the the previous one before you closed, the the previous public comment kind of closed pretty quick, and I just. I had a question. Just, I I'm hoping you'll allow me to just ask it right now, but it seems, you know, for raising the. The minimum to forty, and our current high is forty three point five, and that's. Again, I'm understanding the conversation correctly, that that was the high through the year. Or not through the year, but you know, we know we're going to go down from there until December, aren't we essentially, you know? We know for sure we're going to fall below that forty percent throughout the year, because we get, you know, monies in, but not significant, and if we're at forty three. Does it just, you know, we know we're immediately going to drop below, not immediate, but over the next few months, that we know we're going to drop below that forty percent. Am I correct in understanding it like that, like?
If I clarify the motion that's before the board, and and for the previous discussion, it was. Changing the current policy of seventeen percent on June thirtieth to forty percent on June thirtieth. And so there there was not a discussion about measuring it daily, monthly, weekly throughout the fiscal year. It's the the end of the FY measurement was the the discussion and the motion of the board.
Okay, so it's not like throughout the year, you look at it and say, hey, August, we're at thirty percent, now we need to look at something. It's just you take a look at June thirtieth.
But you have to reject to June thirtieth and say, you know, so. Your projections on a regular basis. And so if you are projecting based on new facts and circumstances, which would most likely be negative. That you aren't going to get there, then we have had a discussion.
Correct, the discussion of projection, not of the, not of the daily position.
A- and the prior fiscal year end twenty three was over fifty percent, right? And we're projecting for fiscal year twenty four, forty three percent. Both are above the forty percent.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah, just making sure, and thank you for feeling that question.
So that concludes our public comment.
Okay, then, we have a motion and a second.
Director Dan Ziger.
No.
Director Hasler.
Aye.
Director Jorgens. Director Romer.
Aye.
President Jex.
Yes.
Committee reports.
I I. I don't know that we have a good report, but I understand that we're going to be interviewing the. Auditors for questions.
Yes, so this is for the audit committee, so the interim audit is taking place this week, and today, the auditors were in the office. There were four auditors at administration doing audit work, so. So one of the questions that came up is that the audit, the auditor needs to ask certain questions to the audit committee. So you can do that, either that a partner can contact you and do it over phone or email. Or it can be done over a Zoom meeting individually with the partner, or you can have a public audit committee meeting if you would like to do it that way.
The way is fine with me. What, how how soon are they looking to do this? I mean, is it like? Individual by Zoom is faster for me, but I mean, if we need to have a audit committee, we can have an audit.
I don't think we need a per- or an audit committee meeting.
Yeah.
I would think we just.
Individual.
Interview each of us separately.
All right, perfect. I will have set that set up then. Thank you.
They have some questions they want to post.
Yeah, see if we're.
Correct, and they were, we had four, for the members of the audit team in the to the partner in the office today. Additional one working remotely, they'll be back in the office tomorrow, so the the audit is proceeding. Along a- as.
And contracts been signed and all that.
Gathered around the little table in my office.
Okay.
Ad hoc committee develop plans for expanding fire prevention program.
We did not have a meeting.
Ad hoc committee facility station forty one.
We did not meet.
Ad hoc committee joint fire prevention with city of Arinda.
I don't think the meeting is scheduled.
And we will open public comment on the committee reports. We do not have any hands raised.
Okay.
Future agenda items.
We need to put the. What's the name of it? Mark's.
Maraga Renda Fire. I think we will open public comment and and then, or unless you want to.
Quest to meet at the September meeting, not the August meeting, so I can do some more preparation and background work, please.
I'm not going to be here in September.
I would, maybe we ought to just keep it on the August, give you what you can done by August.
I'm going to be honest then.
Go on, isn't not not being able to.
You know, like wait on, like in Borneo and.
And you're gone in September?
I'm I'm going to September.
Well, no, I'm. I mean, will we have a call?
I'll be here in September. I think we will.
Any other future agenda items? Open public on future agenda items.
Any public?
We do not have any hands raised. Motion to adjourn.
I move readjourn.
Eleven thirty two, all of the favor?
Aye.